Reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's see. Um, let's see. First on our agenda is the statutory election of the Chair and Vice Chair. So, may I have a motion to temporarily suspend the rules and have the Secretary Treasurer, i.e. Dr. Smith, preside over the meeting for the purposes of elections? Someone?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Scott, it's up to you.
I'd like you to pass the gap. No, that's fine. The floor is now open for nominations for the Office of Chairman.
I nominate Karen Bailey as Chair.
Karen Bailey, do you accept the nomination for Chairman?
I do.
All right. As a vote, all in favor of, are there any alternates? Alternates? Okay. All in favor of Karen Bailey for the Office of Chairman signify by raising your hand. All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chairperson Bailey, may you continue. The floor is now open for nomination for the Office of Vice Chairman.
I nominate Kathy Allen.
Mrs. Allen, do you accept the nomination for Vice Chairman?
I do.
Thank you very much. All in favor of Kathy Allen for the Office of Vice Chairman signify by raising your hand? Well, congratulations, Vice Chairman Allen. Is there a motion? To have Scott retain this power in depth? No. Is there a motion to return to the regular rules with Karen Bailey now assuming the duties?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Back to you, Chairperson Bailey. And I shall put this in the drawer until next year.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda, agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will begin with the Superintendent's update and report with Ms. Kibler's.
You wouldn't have thought that much was going on because it's December and we're kind of getting ready for the holidays, but wow, we have been super busy. Before we leap into all of the things that are going on, we have cameras for athletic events. We've been installing these huddle cameras at all three of our high schools, both out in the stadium and now we're moving into the gym. And these cameras are amazing. There are actually links on here and we go through them if we had more time to show, but they, it's HD camera and it follows the motion and it's tracking automatically and nobody really has to, it's fantastic. But it doesn't happen without a great many people putting their hands in and helping. And specifically, I T S, Mike Reese and Eric Hatton really were directly involved in making sure that all the software works and putting it together. Maintenance personnel, Tommy Bowles and Thomas Michel, Mitchi, sorry, Mitchi, Mitchi. Were involved in actually putting it together. And then Tech Center Personnel, Mr. Kenan Williams and students for all the electrical work and everything like that. I mean, it is really amazing. And this is something that as we move forward, you're gonna, when we talk about fantastic plays and things that happen, we can actually include and, and put out into the community. So that's really great enhancements that we're having in each one of our facilities. We conducted Slack and I know that Ms. Kibler's gonna be talking about Slack, the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council. We're gonna be talking about that a little later. But then after Slack, we then had Sage, which is the Superintendent's Advisory Group of Employees. And these are all of the, all of the people from the wall, all the fantastic Teachers of the Year nominees from each one of the schools and the Education Support Professional nominees from all of the schools and all the locations and all the buildings. And we get together to talk about how things are going in the system several times throughout the year. We talked right after, right after the students and the students, I, what they brought forward as topics of discussion were the exact ones that we would then, we then had with the adults. Instructional engagement, persistent vacancies and the challenge that that creates in the classroom and across the school, student behavior and consequences. And the big one here with students in particular just to, is that you, you know, that if one person does something wrong, you don't do collective punishment. They were very upset about collective punishment. And actually, the staff people felt very much the same. They weren't, they weren't a big fan of, of rules put in place because one employee did something that they shouldn't have.
So no one likes contingency? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, no one likes contingency lunches and nobody likes more rules that were put in place because staff people perhaps didn't do what they were supposed to do, that kind of thing. And then last we talked about mental and behavioral health and it was a really great conversation and kind of segue into Pillar Four, the second town hall that we had, which is Resources for All Students, which focus on addressing all of those things that may be barriers to them being engaged instructionally and productively in each one of the schools. We had a fantastic turnout for that, for that town hall. And if you didn't have the opportunity to attend in person, nor did you watch it in real time, it is posted on our YouTube channel. It is well worth the forty-five minute video just to hear of all the things that we're doing in St. Mary's County. Oftentimes, I have conversations with people and they go, and they, they're always like, well, you know what you should do, you should do. And it's like, please, before you start saying what we should do, take a look at what we are doing. And if we are not doing it and you, and it's still on your list, that would be a great conversation to be had. So that was the Blueprint Town Hall. Further following on this whole idea of health, we had the most beautiful celebration of the first full year of operation of our school-based health centers at Spring Ridge Middle School and at Margaret Brent Middle School. And we rolled out the red carpet for all of those responsible for this incredible work. But enhancing the recognition was the governor's attendance at, in St. Mary's and then specifically to come out to the James A. Forrest Current Technology Center. This is the first governor that, that in my tenure in St. Mary's County Public Schools, the governor that's come down to St. Mary's County to actually be in one of our schools and actually speak to staff and students. It was a really, really special night. And so many people put in hours getting it just right. Certainly, all of the staff at the Forest Center and Chef Granados and Bonnie Kelly and all of the children that they work with and Eric.
Millam.
Millam, who overseeing the production, the video production crew. There is a great video. Please take the time to watch the video. It really does highlight not only the governor's remarks, but also the, the, the work that was done. And Dr. Brewster is really, she's the force behind all of it, making sure that it, she was making a truly memorable evening to recognize the hard work of people and the work that people do on behalf of others. I do have a little clip because the governor was down here and so I do want to play this little clip. It's, it's one minute, but, and in a part of it, you'll see him looking over there. And when he's looking over there, he was looking at our two Slack students, Elena and Gabby, as well as Dr. Brewster, because Dr. Brewster was over there with those two kids, so with those two Slack members. So they felt like the governor was talking to them. And I mean, it was really, it was really amazing. And that's, that's them right there on stage with Dr. Brewster and the governor. That's, that's Gabby and Alana. They were really, so when he speaks, he's looking at them for half of it. And then the other part, he looks over and he's looking at me. And I just, you know, it was a little bit of a fanboy moment. It was, it was great. It was really great.
And, and you know, we're talking about it where we said, things don't happen. Things are made to happen. Nothing happens by accident. Nothing happens just because. Nothing happens because time just passes. The only way powerful things happen is because we have leaders who say, now's the time. And that's exactly what you all have done. That at a time when, was a real measure of chaos and concern, at a time when people were still trying to figure out which way was up and which way was down, at a time when people were still trying to understand, how do we best support our families and keep our communities together when we're also at the same time being told to stay apart? How do we do this? And you all said that the best way to do it is by holding on tight to the thing that we all know best, is that those who stay together are going to win together. And we have to take care of each other. And the leadership that you all shown and not just creating these centers of excellence, which is what they are, and not just making sure that you got it done here, but setting the example for how the entire state moved, which then in turn set the entire example for how the entire country should move. It was not just powerful. It was legacy building.
That's not bad. I mean, the governor was in the Forest Center talking about our school-based health centers and saying that legacy building. That was pretty amazing. Special night for, you know. So thank you, thank you for everybody who maddeningly had to keep on changing and rearranging and changing and rearranging and getting everything right. There was so much effort that went into that. And just, I, I, I hope that they, I hope they take that to heart. Because when they're talking about leadership, they're talking about every single person's leadership in that room and everybody's leadership to get every, a part of that in that room. So, pretty nice little Christmas gift. I've been doing some school visits. Piney Point Elementary School, I got to read Always Everly to a kindergarten class. Benjamin Bannaker, I got to read Night Tree. Diner Day Elementary School, we got to go to every single one of the classes and recognize the Flame Student of the Month that best demonstrates all the, all the elements of flame and Get Picture with Dragon. It was very good. Tomorrow, we have our virtual job fair. There's still an opportunity to join the school system that the governor just said is legacy building. So, you know, yeah.
That could be our hashtag?
Yeah. Yeah. Join the, join the legacy building in the Mother County. Here we are, right? So, virtual job fair. I believe you can sign, you can sign up all through today. And in fact, you can sign up even until, I think tomorrow, even tomorrow morning, you can sign up for it. So, please, if you're interested in joining us, that would be a great opportunity. We are two days away. We'll call it today done. We are two days away.
It's nine o'clock.
From the longest winter break that we scheduled, you know, we're really two solid weeks plus a day on the other side. So, wow, have our people earned a vacation. To everybody who makes sure that the buses run and the buildings open and the food is fantastic and the building is everything that it needs to be and every single teacher and support paraprofessional and instructional resource and counselor and nurse and administrator and anybody that I'm leaving out, boy, I hope you have a happy holidays. Boy, I hope you have some time. I hope you really enjoy, you know, your time with your family. You have really earned a solid two weeks. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my partner in crime, who we have concluded all of our elementary schools, with the exception of the Chesapeake Public Charter School, which you're gonna visit in January. It's, it has been a whirlwind. So.
It's been awesome. Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Happy two days until break. It is the homestretch. So, I know I'm looking forward to it. I hope you all are. I hope everyone's also doing well and that you had a fabulous Monday morning, two-hour delay of gift from Mother Nature and Dr. Smith. So thank you for that.
Twenty-two months.
Yeah. We have a chock full agenda today, so I'm gonna fly through this. So, keep up, guys. We gotta go. All right. So before I get into the school visits, I wanted to highlight this past week Slack meeting that Dr. Smith talked about, which was the second quarterly meeting for the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, which thanks to Dr. Smith, Dr. Marr, Mrs. Larek, the Slack Steering Committee, our awesome system leaders and so, so, so many more people, went just swimmingly. We celebrated the upcoming holidays with hot chocolate and cookie decorating. So it was a lot of fun. It was great stuff. Cookie decorating, all that good stuff. Okay. Aside from all these fun games in Slack, we did talk about SMCPS Care and they did a wonderful job. So this was our SMCPS Care reports from all four high schools, including Fairleigh, Grape Mills, Chopticon and Lenartown. So they said that what makes them connected are they have an extensive amount of clubs, just to highlight a few that they had written down, whereas ROTC, Black Student Union, SGA Art Club, they also love team bonding and when teachers make efforts to know the students. They are accountable because they see that it's showing up to class on time and being responsible for your own learning is what accountable is to them, which is absolutely true. They are resilient when they feel that they know that there's a purpose behind the learning, knowing that it has some value to them later on in life. That really helps them stay resilient. And there was a big shout out, a lot of times, for Dr. Guidri at Chopticon. He showed up a lot in the sticky notes that we received from the students talking about resilience. So I figured I would give him a shout out there. And then the students are excited to learn because they do a lot of fun, hands-on activities in class, like launching rockets in physics. We had a student who said that they set their hand on fire, but that was on purpose. It was completely safe. It was a unique chemistry trick where they could protect their hand and just set it on fire. And I was like, whoa. But apparently it wasn't an accident. So all is well.
They were excited about fire.
Yes. Fire, fire. And then Harry Potter Science Days, that's actually, that was mine. My awesome biology teacher, Ms. Sunderland, last year would do Harry Potter Science Days because science is magic. And Chopticon, the CI class, Judge Amy Lorenzini visited and to talk about all of her stuff in her jurisdiction. So that was really cool, just kind of being starstruck by Judge Amy Lorenzini. Dropping Barbies from the roof in physics was a fun activity at Chopticon. I don't necessarily know the purpose of that, maybe to demonstrate gravity, but they were excited to dropkick the Barbies. And then of course, Science Fair in ISF is a big thing, particularly at the Tech Center, doing the, this big like International Science Fair. It's like, it's like a celebrity level deal. So that's something that keeps them really excited to learn. And that was the care reports from Slack. We also discussed in depth at Slack the idea of teacher engagement or really how teachers do great things that make not just learning fun, but being in the building really fun to make it a whole cohesive community. I mean, we know teachers are the people that see these students for hours and hours on end and they really make up the critical foundation of the academic experience, which we all know. So, these are some of the things that the students felt really made it so the teachers were going above and beyond and fulfilling that critical role. So some things that they loved about teacher engagement were activities where there was movement involved. They were going outside, field trips. For example, there was basketball vocabulary at Chopticon, which is where instead of just doing tedious notes and hitting the books to understand your vocabulary, they could be asked to define a word and if they got it right, they could shoot a basket and get points in the game. So that was, that sounds like a lot of fun. They like it when the teachers make time for bonding in between the students and in between the teachers to get to know each other outside of the classroom. They feel like, they love it when the teachers are understanding and accommodating students' needs and are very flexible. They also love it when they get to recreate scenes, like historical scenes or courtrooms to really immerse themselves in the activities. It's a great way to remember it. They love it when the teachers are understanding of mental health and to do lessons on it to really make them feel seen and heard. They also really appreciate when teachers go above and beyond outside of the classroom by doing clubs and extracurriculars with students, just to go the extra mile and really show that they care. They also love free seating and partner work, anything to make that environment more welcoming and comfortable. There's the idea that somebody had talked about, the idea of it being our classroom, not just the teacher's classroom. So it really feels like a second home away from home. And then finally, the big idea was just that teachers who are physically engaged, love and know their subject, they're masters of their field and prioritize learning over just working grades. So those are some of the highlights of things that they feel where teacher engagement was really doing a great job. Some things that they might change with teacher engagement was heavy workload. So we all understand, nobody wants to, ah, too much work. So that was something they talked about changing. They also appreciate more transparency in weekly and future lesson plans and schedules. So like if on Schoology you have a weekly agenda where the entire like syllabus for the week is planned out, it really helps them get to know what their week is going to look like. So they love that stability. And then there's the idea of collective punishment again. You know, the, the few ruining for the many. So that was a big no-no.
Right.
That they talked about. Less graded group work, of course. They don't want to feel that other people are responsible for their grades. And then this idea of jigsaw assignments had come up. And jigsaw assignments are when people, when students will like come away from each other and they'll learn about separate things and then they come back together and they like share what they learned, which in theory is a really awesome idea. And some students really like it, but then some people felt like it was a bad game of telephone where like the learning kind of got messed up in the many steps. So that was something that they feel like could be improved upon. And then down below here, I have teacher shoutouts. These were teachers whose names were said specifically about doing awesome, awesome things. So if your name is on this list, kudos to you. I want to read them out, but for sake of time, just, these are our awesome, awesome teachers. Some of those are mine, Ms. Harding, Ms. Sunderland, Mr. Snyder. Awesome. So teacher shoutouts. All right. So now I'm gonna move into our, uh.
Wait a second, we actually visited schools too?
Yes.
That seems like that, for the last two weeks, that seems like that's enough. But it wasn't.
No.
We also visited schools.
Oh, yeah. Because it's crunch time. It's the final hour before break. So we're getting it all in there. So that covers it for us. Locker. So now we're doing elementary school visits. And this is actually our, our big finale for our fifth graders, except for CPCS, because we have officially visited all regular eighteen elementary schools. So with that, before I recap each and every school, I just have to say that this was one of the coolest experiences ever for me and I don't mean that insincerely. I mean, it was just an absolute privilege to, very few get to meet every single fifth grader and every single principal and teacher who is effectively running the education system with their boots on the ground. I mean, they're just amazing. They're curating the minds of our future because teaching is the most noble profession, because you all literally run laps around gaggles of students solely for their self-enrichment. And it was, it was just amazing. Each and every day was a new adventure. So to all my fifth grade friends out there who might be watching right now, I want you to know just how happy you all made me every single visit. And I want you to know that your voice really does matter and you all have so much potential. So never lose sight of that. And most importantly, never lose sight of your phenomenal humors. I mean, they're all so funny.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, I love it. So with that, I will now get off my soapbox and I will highlight the most adorable and hardworking communities that we have built in SMCPS, starting with Oakville. So in Oakville, they are connected with their community gatherings, their dance holiday celebrations and their yearbook. They loved getting their yearbook back.
First time yearbook came up. That was cool.
Yeah. They must have a really phenomenal one. I mean, it's always fun to get your signatures and stuff. They are accountable because they have Golden Otters, so like an award for the really outstanding students and pause tickets again with your PBIS systems to help encourage awesome behavior. And they have Tuesday messages, which come from their principal. They set a weekly goal for behavior and just the achievements that they're looking to get done in the week. So it's a great way to get everyone on the same page and to hope everyone that is very accountable that week. And then we have resilience, growth mindset, of course. They do recovery, redo, redemption opportunities and small group intervention and support to help students who maybe aren't feeling super strong in specific subjects improve. And then they're excited to learn because of playing Jeopardy for review on tests. We did that at the high school. I love that. Jeopardy's always awesome. I watch that all the time. Extension activities on their laptops, like Booket and Wordle are, like they do the Wordle every day. I'm like, don't spoil the Wordle for me that day because I hadn't done it. But yeah, so I love that. They also have the best teachers in principal, which is obligatory. Everyone says that. So the competition is still tight. Ice cream Fridays are a great reward to keep everyone at school. And then all the students feel that they have a really deep connection to their teachers and one another. So just showing up to school to see all these people that they love keeps them really excited to learn. So that was Oakville. All right. And then we had a White Marsh. So White Marsh is connected through their honey pot news, which is so, so cute. It's like Winnie, Winnie the Pooh.
Right, they're, because they're the bears.
They're the bears.
So the honey pot news makes sense.
It took me a second. I was like, you're not bees, are you? And then I realized. I love it. They do assemblies to stay connected. And they're connected to each other as they can see all of their previous teachers from K through five. So they are a very small school, but they have awesome teacher retention rates. So all the teachers stayed and all the fifth graders who've been there for years, they're all still there. Those people that, you know, their first grade teachers, second grade teachers. And they also have these beautiful doors that have big, big windows. So they're not closed off from each other. So as these students go down the main hallway, they can see these teachers that they've had for years still doing their thing in their classrooms. And I thought that was really exciting to be able to see in there. And they all look so cute.
Oh, yeah.
They are accountable because they have individual data meetings with Principal Steele, so which is a great opportunity where they get one-on-one attention from, from their amazing principal to get a check-in on how they're doing. So this helps them wanna stay resilient, not resilient, but stay accountable and stay encouraged to finish out the year because they know that they're doing well or maybe they need to improve. They have this idea of going for green. So on their testing, if they're, they're aiming for the green, which is proficient in their testing, there's the blue level, but the goal is green. So go for the green for the White Marsh and everybody else. It was awesome to see that this school was really prioritizing results on testing because not, like, because not everyone always understands the goals that you're supposed to set and where they want you to be in testing. But to know, to get everyone on the same page in that regard was a unique thing that White Marsh is doing to help improve those testing scores. And they also have their three Rs and then the bear rap. So they all stood up and performed this awesome rap.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. We should have, we should have videoed.
We should have. They killed it. They just did it on the spot. I was like, get it. And then they, they, they got it. So they are accountable because of that. They are resilient because, okay, so never back down, never give up. I say this to almost every fifth grade class. I'll, I'll say never back down, never what? And they know it. This is from social media. I don't, I don't actually know this person, but I've heard.
It is. It's Nick E H thirty, who is a very preeminent, family-friendly.
Family-friendly.
Gamer on Fortnite. Before I put it up there, I did research to find out who Nick E H thirty is. So, yeah, so he's good. He's very positive on Fortnite.
So when we talk about the idea of resilience, students get it right off the bat because they know this.
E H.
And that's just living in their brains. So they can, you know, recall that at any moment. They like their programs of extra math, extra benchmark and test review that keeps them resilient because they get to practice. And they have an attendance trophy. So they're really great at incentivizing awesome attendance, which is very important. They're excited to learn. They do math songs. They recited like two or three different math songs.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, there's a lot of singing going on.
I could tell they were in chorus too. They could.
Yeah. They sounded good.
They have stem for all, penny drives for the PTA, field trips, dances and concerts, and then DJ Pink. So DJ Pink is not their principal. They're two different schools. Julie Steele, Principal Julie Steele and DJ Pink are not the same person.
No.
But they're both pretty awesome.
Yeah.
So there's that.
Yeah, DJ Pink leads the lead.
Does all the dances and she absolutely gets the party hype, apparently. So.
Hannah Montana of White Marsh.
All right. And then we have Lexington Park. Now Lexington Park kind of blew it out of the water. They were amazing. So they have this really unique thing at Lexington Park with the house system. So it's kind of like Harry Potter. And this is what keeps them connected. They have house teams and they are based on different animals that represent certain characteristics like integrity, endurance, courage, what have you. These are the animals on the screen here. And the actual names of the houses are the names of those animals in languages that some of the students at the school might speak. So for example, the octopus is saying tau for, which is, I believe, Vietnamese. So there's a student at that school that is Vietnamese and speaks that language, which is, I mean, that's just so inclusive and I love that. So everyone understands that. So Dr. Smith and I, when we arrived, we were each sorted into our own house. I was sorted into Karajan, which is the lion. So courage. I got an awesome bracelet, which I don't have on me today, but I was like, I was sorted into Gryffindor essentially. And I was like, yes.
Well, I've, I've got mine on today and I, I am, I am Dolphin Haruma, which is compassion.
Yes.
Mr. Hugs down here.
Yes.
Mr. Poetry.
Mr. Poetry.
There you go.
So with these house systems, they do a lot to keep them very cohesive. They do house meetings and house points. And then panda roundup, which is kind of like a pep rally for all the houses. So that's a lot of fun. And then they also have really close friends and supportive adults. It really is like a tight-knit community there. And then evening activities outside of the school that keeps everyone connected. So that really stood out, those house systems. I mean, that's awesome. They also are accountable because of panda magic. So they also have their own song or mini rap to recite panda magic. They did it for us. They sprinkled us with their panda magic and I felt, I felt super special. And then they believe in integrity for staying accountable. They are resilient because of their growth mindset. And then somebody said, even if your shoe flies off when you're kicking during kickball, you can stay resilient.
You still run the bases.
You still run the bases.
You still run the, I don't care if your, if your shoe goes flying, you one-foot, you still run the bases. And that's what resilient is. And I'm like, that's, yeah.
That's a great example. Because they have a kickball game to do at the end of the air. And it's like, well, if your shoe flies off, that, stay resilient. So beautiful message. And then they're excited to learn because they have holiday sing-alongs and mystery science, which is a really cool program that keeps everyone super curious about it. Super fun teachers and lessons. They're one big family. Many, many students recited this at the end of the day, that they are really one big family. And they're super proud of their school building. It's, it's got fresh paint, fresh attention given to the grounds of their school. So it makes the building super pleasurable to be in because it's so.
That was, they were the only, so several of the schools talked about their location within or their size of their school. Lexington Park was the, was the first school where they were talking about, they noticed the attention that has been given to their building. And I know that we've certainly heard, you know, Dr. Jaffers and Ms. Howe talk about, you know, how we're, how we're investing in buildings, but to recognize that the fifth graders see it. Take that back. That's a pretty, that's a pretty darn neat thing.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
That is really amazing. So that kind of wraps it up for our school visits for the elementary schools, other than CPCS, of course. So now I'm really looking forward to CPCS and our middle school visits in twenty twenty-four to meet all the amazing students and teachers there who just have that spark for learning. I mean, this has been awesome. So that, that finishes us off.
Are you sure?
Yes.
I would like to do it one more time, but do it. Do it faster.
That was my time on that one. Did I get it?
That was, that was fantastic. Thank you so much.
If anyone tried to like, you know, follow along and like, you know, the.
Oh, they tried to transcribe that?
Tried to transcribe it?
You'd have to speed read it. That's good stuff.
Nice try, guys.
But I can appreciate that because apparently I'm also a fast talker. So.
Oh, yeah.
The thing is, there's just, there's so many, there's just so many.
So many words we need to say.
We saw so many great things. We saw so many great things.
And our agenda is long today. So we gotta, get that in there.
Okay, so in that mood, we have no recognitions. We have no public hearing. Do we have any public comment? All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda is the approval of minutes of November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, personnel, teachers. There are no administrative and supervisory appointments. Department of Food and Nutrition Services Contract for Kitchen Refrigeration Services, Office Supplies Contract, O D P Business Solutions and Fresh Produce Contract. I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion is carried and now we will begin with Ms. Howe, who will present twice.
Good morning.
Good morning. First is the local capital, the local C I P.
Alright, so we have, um, already started the capital improvements program process. We went before you in September with the state C I P. We've had a, um, presentation to the commissioners on our state C I P and we've had a budget work session so far. Um, this next step is the change in our local C I P. As we present to the commissioners, we always add some projects as we continue on. With the completion of the comprehensive maintenance plan and review of where we are in terms of those needs. I know it's small. There's a lot that's been going on. Um, and a lot of collaboration that's happening at D S S between design and construction, maintenance. Um, all the other departments as well as mine as we start to look, um, at our C I P. So one of the things that happens every time is that we do add all of our six-year projects, which for this year is F Y twenty thirty, which is hard to, to think about. Um, but we did add all of those projects. We then, um, looked at our state eligible project budgets, um, that needed to be reflective of the current increase that the state is projecting, which is five percent increase. We started to look at our projects and we really took a good look at those ones that are completely locally funded, which is programmatic and critical. Um, and we wanted to look at ways to out, think outside the box to bring more money into, um, the school system and into the county. Um, they did confirm at the state level that there will be aging school programs, so we added our seven thousand dollars for design services for that project. In relocatables, there's been a lot of concentrated effort on looking at our, um, our fleet of relocatables. Um, and what we're adding in addition to the three hundred eighty-five thousand that we have for replacement or modification to units. In F Y twenty-five and F Y twenty-six, we are adding five hundred thousand dollars each year for demolition of those units that are aged out. Um, and we've just worked recently and Ms. Um, Laena was, is working on it, um, vigorously to get it done, um, to. Um, demolish a state unit. Um, that process was long and intense because it was a new process for a lot of the people at the I A C. And we now have a process in place to do that. Um, so when we're looking at this, we'll be looking at state and local units. And to, to get rid of those in the fleet that, um, have aged out, um, based on many years of service to us. One of the things we really wanted to look at, and we've worked with maintenance a lot, is trying, how do we extend the life of our systems? To get us to a point where we can get a HVAC system replaced. One of those pieces is chiller replacements. They're not inexpensive. They, they come at a high cost and we really want the state to participate in that process. And up until last year, they did not. Um, we made a passionate plea for our healthy schools program last year and we were approved. We were the first one to, to get that type of a project approved. So we're gonna come back again this year and we're gonna ask for another healthy school program request. And it's outside of the C I P, the normal C I P. It's an additional pot of funding. But we're gonna be looking, um, to do chiller replacements at Great Mills High School, Margaret Brent Middle School and the Dr. James A. Forest Career Technology Center. The local share of that will be one million eight hundred eighty thousand and eighty-eight dollars. And we'll talk a little bit more about how it's funded at the state level. But we needed to include this in our C I P because while it's approved. In July of next year, we needed to make sure we had the matching local funds for it in our C I P. So we've added that project. Um, in terms of programmatic, um, we added two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in F Y twenty-five and twenty-six. For work related, um, to meeting the state's standards for the maintenance effectiveness assessments, and that's the conversation we just had about Lexington Park Elementary School. With that additional funding in those two years, what that allows us to do is address the issues that the state will grade us on, that they do not pay for. Things like repointing buildings, sidewalk repairs, painting, all of the interior, um, fixtures. But what it will do us, do for us is if we score high enough on that maintenance effectiveness assessment. There are bonuses that we can get added on to. Um, right off the top, there's two, which is five percent for poverty between fifty-five and eighty percent based on farms. And ten percent for a concentration of poverty above eighty percent. So those are ones that we can already work with. In terms of construction, um, and assessments, five percent for a facility that receives a superior or good rating on their last assessment. Or one that receives adequate and for which the average, um, lifespan based on their, um, remaining useful life is at least a hundred and twenty percent. So what that means is we're taking really good care of it. Those chiller projects we talk about, those are extending the life. So we're finding a way to use their funding to help us extend the life and then to be able to come back and get these bonuses. Um, it really does allow us to add, um, significant, um, percentages to us. We can get from fifty-eight percent. If you take the highest poverty and the highest construction, we can get up to seventy-three percent state funded on some projects. So a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment per year, if we can get to that level on a project. Um, that is five or six million dollars will make a big difference. Um, we wanted to make sure, because the commissioners made it very clear at the last work session, that we needed to cut. As all of the groups, three million dollars out of F Y twenty-five. So I've added a lot of money here and we really wanted to find a way to come back in as a net zero change to our F Y twenty-five request, including all of these new items. The way we were able to do that is, um, Ms. Laena and I looked at the cash flow on some of our projects. And on that project, we got from, um, the state on healthy school for Green Holly. When they funded that project, they funded their entire state amount at one time. We weren't getting it in multiple years, so we have all of the state money, the nine million dollars from the state. What that allowed us to do was to shift two point six million dollars from our F Y twenty-five requests locally to twenty-six. Allow us to come in with a zero net change, including all of the things that we needed to add. Um, in terms of our future, things we still have to consider. Project, um, bids are gonna be done from six to eighteen months from the time we get the funding. A lot can change during that period of time to the good or to the, to the bad. Um, we have to consider state projects that receive partial or no funding or, um, require for funding or deferral. We have our appeal to our state C I P tomorrow. Um, we haven't got a time yet. We're still waiting on that, but we have an appeal tomorrow. And based on the twenty-five percent or seventy-five percent recommendation. We're not even getting fully funded for our request for Piney Point at this time. So, uh, for Lady Marshall Dent. Piney Point and Chopticon did not receive any recommendation for funding. With that caveated, they're only basing it on the two hundred and some million dollar budget at this point because the governor's budget hasn't been announced. Last year, that budget got to six hundred and eighty-nine million and confident it will get up higher than this. But it is a consideration that we do have to think about, especially as we move forward with Chopticon. And the amount that we're gonna be asking for. So this is a real thing that we're definitely gonna have to consider moving forward. We have fluctuating construction costs, still the availability of products and services. Um, funding levels, um, and the participation percentage of the state may change. It is up for review again next year. It held at fifty-eight percent. Uh, but it is, um, gonna be up in F Y twenty-six C I P that it will be up for review again. We, there's a lot of energy conservation legislation that's being proposed. It may impact our ability to do what we need to do with the funding that we have. Um, and then we do have to consider that the changes that we may need to make based on our school facilities assessments and our state maintenance inspections. So our focus is gonna remain on our roof and our H V A systems and our other aging infrastructure. Enrollment at this point still does not generate the need for any new construction. We're going to start including more work that is identified as deferred in our comprehensive maintenance plan into larger projects. Um, or ones that are now state eligible such as chillers. And we're gonna continue to monitor approved and proposed residential developments because there's a lot in the pipeline. It's just a matter of when they start and how that impact comes to us. It is coming. So in terms of the healthy school fund, um, it is approved outside of the normal state C I P cycle. Um, will apply in March, um, and they will make their recommendation and approval in July. It is competitive, um, and it prioritizes projects that correct issues posing an immediate life, safety or health threat to occupants of a facility. It does require a typical state local share match, which is why we're putting the money in because we won't know until later, but we're gonna go ahead and put it in now. And in that competitiveness, the, the primary thing that they're looking for. Is to provide grants to public and secondary schools for projects that improve the health of school facilities, including those conditions. And we're going for those first ones. Air conditioning, heating and their temperature regulation and indoor air quality. With Green Holly, while it said mold remediation, we were able to, um, get the mercury, um, remediation in there. Um, and then roofs and windows are also in there. So if we look at our three schools, we have Margaret Bryant, the Forest Center and Great Mills. Um, currently, um, Great Mills is the only one that has one chiller. Um, we really want to go to redundancy to make sure we have two because if you lose one, you're, you're in a, in a robot mind. So those will be downsized a little. They don't need to be as, as big as they are, but we'll go from one unit to two. Um, the cost of that comes in at right around four point, um, five million dollars. Uh, of which the state would pay two million five hundred ninety-six thousand and the county would pay one million eight eighty. That is a huge windfall if we can get this project approved in terms of our meeting our need. So this is the C I P sheet you've already seen in the past. Um, we did the state C I P. Those outlined in green are the ones that we talked about. Was adding the design funding for Green Holly and switching that to the two-year funding versus the one. Adding the healthy schools, adding the aging school program, adding five hundred thousand to two years for relocatables. And adding two hundred and fifty thousand for two years for building infrastructure. And when you can come down to the very bottom, you'll see that our net change is zero for F Y twenty-five, um, and you'll see a three point eight. Overall, with all of those things that we needed to do and the five percent in the six years, we're only up four point three million from where we were this time last year. In terms of the state, the only change that you're gonna see is the addition of the two point five nine, um, six million for the healthy schools grant. In terms of critical and programmatic projects, I'm not gonna read them all. They're here. Um, it really just gets to the heart of what we're trying to do. We have a lot of facilities that have a lot of needs. Um, and it really is addressing the comprehensive, um, maintenance plan and those things that we need to do. As we continue on with our brightly implementation, this time next year, we're gonna have even more information. We have a deliverable coming in January. Which is their assessment of our facilities. Um, I think there's gonna be a great correlation to that, to what the state is saying through their maintenance effectiveness and their school facilities assessment. We're gonna have a lot of data to be able to analyze and increase this project funding and hopefully look for ways to make them state eligible. At the budget work session with the commissioners, um, there was a question about, um, programmatic and critical. Um, and we do have, um, we have twenty, twenty-one million between the two funding sources over six years. Um, we did a little cost analysis in our office, um, and we looked at what we were actually paying per square foot. And we compared ourselves to, um, the county to see how we, we, um, balanced out. So the county has around eight hundred eighty thousand square foot of facilities. And based on their programmatic and critical costs and ours, which we have two point six million, um, almost in square footage. For programmatic, they came in around three dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot. We came in at four dollars and twenty-seven cents, so we're fifty-two, um, cents higher. But if you really look at it, we're trying to get the things fixed programmatically so they don't become critical. And where that shows up is their critical is four dollars and thirty-four cents a square foot and we're four dollars and three. And if you really look at this analysis, it really just shows that whole link. If we can, can do some programmatic and critical and C I P. If we can get it at programmatic, it keeps it from becoming a C I P project. So this was a really good analysis. I, I feel really comfortable with the fact we're on track with where we need to be in terms of our, um, work. So our next step, we have a deadline to meet our, um, with the commissioners with their next step, which is January second. Based on your approval today, Ms. Hayden and I will work with the county to get our C I P detail sheets updated. Um, and then they will start back into, um, the budget work session, budget hearing and final approval. From January through May. At the same time, the state will be giving us incremental increases in our funding as well, hopefully ultimately getting to a fully funded budget in May. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Um, I have no questions. Thank you.
I think it was, you reported earlier about, uh, projections of maintenance costs in the future. You had a different formula. And that formula showed, uh, less, uh, requirement for, uh, funding is.
No, we actually, we need more funding for where we need to be in terms, and that's why we're asking for additional money in programmatic this year. Um, and we're looking for alternative ways to, to, to use those to defer projects from coming on. Such as the chillers to keep from having to do the H V A C as fast, so that we can, the big push for us right now is gonna be Chopticon. We're gonna have four years of Chopticon being very substantial cost and, and the ability to do other projects at that time. We're gonna have to get creative and look at healthy schools in other ways, but they still require a local match. So our whole goal is to really focus on critical and programmatic to be able to extend our life, um, during those periods of time when we're trying to do Chopticon.
So your projections then, um, are gonna increase based on. The formulas that you had, uh, reported to the county commissioners. They came to me the other day. And they thought that we were gonna be shortfall using, uh. The formulas that you're gonna, uh, generate for, uh, maintenance cost in the future.
Our maintenance costs are, are rising for a variety of different, so I'd have to, I, I'd love to talk to you a little bit about that more to see where they're coming from, to make sure we can develop an understanding. Our maintenance costs are rising. It's the same thing that affects constructions affecting them, the cost of goods and services. Um, the ability to get products, to be able to get contractors to do work, plus the amount of work that it's requiring to maintain our systems. While they're deferred for an H V A C or a roof.
Ms. Howe, you, you worked directly with Janet Cudmore, correct, on, on all of this? So if we could just go back and, and with the commissioner question, if they could be directing them through their CFO, that would be the very best way to get. The most appropriate targeted and, and, uh, subject matter expert response.
Um, I believe the question actually was referring to something that you spoke to, um, when you were before them last week. And it had to do with, um, us being eligible for the, um, additional percentages.
Okay.
By virtue of, um, the, the programa- the, the kinds of money that we need to put into parking lots.
To the five percent increases.
Right.
Yes. So that is where we are increasing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in F Y twenty-five and twenty-six. In programmatic is to address the issues of the state. When they come down and do the assessments in January, they're going to assess us and penalize us in a score for something that they do not fund. They don't fund the, um, sidewalks. They don't fund repointing of a building where the, the caulking is starting to, to loosen up. But they'll, they'll mark us down for those things. When they do that, it makes us not eligible for the incentive. So we can't get the additional discussion, um, or the additional, um, percentage in. It was a topic of discussion when we had a tri-county meeting and Dr. Smith was at that meeting, all three superintendents were. Um, and we made that very clear. All three of my, my counterparts in my other, um, two counties made it very clear. You're assessing us on something that penalizes us for the same incentive that you're trying to give out. You, you have a disconnect in your two systems. You want us to take the additional percentage and be able to do more work, but yet you're penalizing us by a score for something that you won't pay for, then we, we can't get the incentive. So that has to remain an ongoing discussion.
Uh, I would just, uh, agree with you a hundred percent. We have aging buildings. And intuitively, you'd think you're gonna need more, uh, funding to keep the buildings up.
Well, and that has been the direction we've chosen to take. A lot of other counties in the state have decided when a building gets to a certain age, they demolish it and they build new. Um, while that can extend then the life of that building, there are other costs that have to be considered. We don't have a holding school. Um, there's a lot of coordination. It has to take a building down and put a new building down if you're doing it on the same site. So there can be additional costs to do that and the, the choice we've made is they're community schools, they're well-loved. And we're going to continue to maintain them for as long as we can. It just means we have to look at funding sources in a different way than maybe other counties do.
That's all I have.
No questions. Thank you.
Don't have anything? Mary?
No, no questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Okay, I moved that the Board of Education approved the F Y twenty twenty-five. F Y twenty thirty Local Capital Improvements Program for submission to the Commissioners of Saint Mary's County.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And now Ms. Howe. And Ms. Hayden, I believe you have the commercial communication tower.
So we were approached about a year ago, um, with some interest in. At one of our sites for a communication tower. Um, so we have spent a good amount of time over the last year educating ourselves on what it would take. For, um, Saint Mary's County Public Schools to, to have cell towers, um, on our athletic fields. Uh, so the, the whole premise of this is, um, if there is interest from vendors to do that, it could be Verizon, it could be. Sprint's, T, T-Mobile, whoever, um, that means that they have a need within that community for additional service. Um, and that will benefit, um, our surrounding community. So it was of interest to us to, to look at that. So what it would entail would be a solic- solicitation on behalf of the school system for. So what it would entail would be a solicitation on behalf of the school system for proposals to install light tower poles on stadium or athletic fields that provide lighting and the ability to hang commercial cellular equipment. There, when you look at them, we've got some pictures here from our neighboring county of Charles County that have been doing this for about twenty years now. What it does is it basically goes out onto an athletic field, they find the right location within that field, they replace one stadium light pole. So they put up the new monopole that they can hang at the top of the tower and they, they install new LED stadium lights for us that are aimed at our field. So it's really the replacement of one stadium light. What the thought we had was it would give us the ability to provide funding for fields and grounds and athletic needs at our secondary schools to supplement what we're getting through the programmatic, again, looking for additional ways to bring in money. This isn't something new. This has been done across the state for many years. Charles County has actually had this in place for twenty years. The interest is now moving south in, in the state. So what we thought about was looking at our secondary facilities, particular our high schools, but we were looking at Esperanza, Leonardtown Middle, Margaret Brett Middle, Spring Ridge Middle, Chopticon High School, Great Mills and Leonardtown, and as well as the E-Lift property. One of the things you'll see here is you'll notice that all of the, the zonings are listed here, whether it's a low-density mixed-use or residential or rural preservation or residential high-density. Because it's something we have to take into consideration when we start to consider sites. So the process that we would go through is based on interest in some of our school sites. We would eventually put out a request for proposal if this follows all of the approvals through. And what we would do is we would lease sites, very small pad sites that would be done by a site plan to the vendor via a marketing agreement. The terms would be typically ten years with two options for five years of extension. St. Mary's County Public Schools would not be out any funds because the vendor is responsible for all capital cost for constructing the cap, tower, including the, the licensing, the development, installation, furnishing and maintaining all of the equipment. The vendor then markets, once they build the tower, they market it out to third-party wireless communication providers. And they have to provide those subleases to us and we have to approve them. The towers would be capable of hosting multiple communication transmission devices in the event that emergency management wanted to hang on there as well for the county, they would be, that would be part of our agreement with the vendor would be that they would have to allow them to hang for free. And they'd be freestanding autonomous systems. They would be segregated from our systems for power, grounding and data networks. So there, in addition to the tower, there would be a small fenced-in area that can, has all of their electrical and all of that. So it's not part of any of our systems. Compensation to St. Mary's County would become from a monthly commission payment. And monthly reports would need to be provided by the vendor as to their, their income that they're getting. The vendor's also responsible for forming and requiring, meeting all the requirements of the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC inspections, and has to provide those reports to us. Written evidence of ongoing compliance with FCC. Safety requirements and guidelines would have to be provided to us on a semi-annual basis throughout the term of the contract. The vendors also are gonna be required to meet all of the insurance coverage for the towers during the period of the lease and we would be named as an assured party on that process, on that policy. And we would also require a bond in the name of St. Mary's County that is sufficient to, to remove the system in its entirety and returning the ground back to the way it was. If we wanted to, if they wanted to abandon the tower, it went out of business, or we didn't feel that they were maintaining it in the way that we wanted them to do. So when we started this process, we, we did look at other agreements and where we got that information was looking at a lot of other counties that are already doing this and how they've set their systems up. But the case point study that we really wanted to look at was Charles County. They have towers at four of their high schools, McDonough, Charles, St. Charles, Thomasstone and Westlake. In total, they, they get revenue that ranges depending on the tower, anywhere from about eleven thousand to forty-six thousand dollars annually for those. They've used those to do what we're talking about, to increase their funding for their recreation and sports facilities and to upgrade what they needed to do. And they are doing the same thing, they're replacing a stadium light pole with a cell tower, with the stadium lights being at the appropriate height and re-aimed on the field. One of the things we spent a lot of time working on is the approval process once the board, if they decide to do it, what that looks like. We know about FCC because we've had a tower at Bethune. So we know about those kind of requirements. What we wanted to understand was the approval process that we would need from the county to do this. So we've really used this as a good opportunity to build a relationship with the new Director of Land Use and Growth Management, Jessica Andritz. She's been instrumental in getting us to the point that we can come to you today and understanding the zoning and comprehensive land use requirements that we're gonna be required to do. So in terms of local zoning, the finding that she has come to and has been in place before is that the Board of Education is considered an instrumentality of the state and is such not required to meet local zoning requirements. And that just substantiates the prior findings that we've had. We are exempt from local zoning only. Communication tower projects are still required to meet state and federal regulations and to be issued a zoning building permit. That's when we start talking about the FCC and those things that we need to meet. And it will require a zoning building permit. When it comes to the comprehensive land use compliance, while we're exempt from locals zoning, the Planning Commission does have to give us a comply, a finding of compliance with the comprehensive land use plan. This requirement can be found in the Maryland Annotated Code. And it's a public or privately owned street, square, park or other public way ground or open space, a public building or structure, which we would be considered, or a public utility may not be authorized or constructed in the local jurisdiction or in a geographic section of the local jurisdiction until the Planning Commission has approved the location, character and extent of the development as consistent with the plan. So every year, the CIP group, of which the school system is one, goes before the Planning Commission with all of our detail sheets for our capital projects. This is the requirement that we're meeting, is that we are compliant with this. So Ms. Hayden is gonna walk you through what that really means.
Okay. Yes, consistency is defined in the Annotated Code. And it means that it has, the action that you're looking to take has to further and not be contrary to what's in the comprehensive plan. And the different components would include like policies, land use, development patterns, density and intensity. And the specific ruling, how it's looked at, is in terms of location, character and extent. And in this case, the communication towers would be located at existing athletic facilities. The character is that they would be similar to the light poles, so they would blend in. And in terms of extent, they would hang multiple carriers off of that tower, so it wouldn't, there wouldn't be multiple poles. The extent would be limited to that. And this is something that we do annually when we take the local CIP to the commissioners. We have to cite that in our detail sheets, how we, the specific reference to the comp plan and how we are in compliance with that. And that is at the bottom of this slide, there is ten point two point two point CI. That's where we ensure adequate availability and adequacy of schools. So we meet that with this. But we also would meet another reference of ten dot two dot two dot A dot III. Where we would help provide a full range of utility services. So that, that's the terms in which they would be looking at how we're in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And that may differ because there's different zonings as you saw on the other slide. So they're gonna look at the character of that school and that zoning district to see if this fits in their, their opinion.
So this, while, while slightly different, it is very consistent to how we've always proceeded with other projects. Just we go there as a group, this one we would be going as an individual agenda item for this particular project.
Can I ask two questions on this? So the county entered into an agreement to put a tower at the fairgrounds or Leonardtown?
Fairgrounds.
Right, so they went through the same process?
Actually, that's different. There are commercial towers and there are public towers.
Okay.
This would be under commercial tower.
So, and what, but I was under the impression that when the, when the county did it, it was still a tower that they were receiving a lease-back payment from.
But they hung, on that particular tower, they hung emergency management services equipment.
Okay, so then they were exempt from this?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And we did reach out, and we will continue to reach out to that, them to see if there is any interest. Once we get, if we get to the point where we're approved, we would ask them if they want to hang here as well. Because that can then change how, how the dynamics work.
Well, I mean, 'cause my point is that Chopticon, when you're down there, if I dial nine-one-one, I ping off Virginia.
Yes.
So I can't, I cannot get to a Maryland, right, yeah, I, I can't get to a Maryland nine-one-one, I ping Virginia. And then they have to, oh, sorry, we have to transfer you, which is not helpful in an emergency, but anyway.
Yes.
Okay, and then my second point is on your point about the, on the RPD pieces. There are farms up along the, the other end of Route Six that all have these towers on them. So that should not be a barrier because that's on private property and I'm assuming it went through Land Use and Growth Management anyway.
So the, the beauty of this from the carriers' perspective is they're, they're getting the service out where they need it to be. It does show a very good faith effort to coordinate and go with the public school system because there's a benefit to the school system as well and it, it creates a great partnership between the carriers and, and the community. For us, Mike Watson and I have had a huge discussion about this. In terms of the equipment that he wants to use and going to the payless entry fees, this will increase our service at these facilities as well. So we get, not only, we wouldn't, we would get a financial benefit, but we would also get a benefit from having increased service at the facilities where these are located.
Right, I agree, okay, all right, I'm sorry, but there's, before we went on to the next section, I just figured, 'cause those are both, those are,
Yes.
I would not see a barrier from the, from land use or the Planning Commission based on, on items that have already been approved within the county.
Right, so, and that is one of the reasons that the ten point two point two A III is very important because it talks about the ability to meet a full range of utility services in areas of the county where they need them.
Right.
And this solves that problem. So it, it should be a compelling case.
Right, okay.
So this first bullet has now changed, 'cause I said this has been ongoing discussions and we were, we had a follow-up discussion yesterday. So the consistency will not have to go as part of the annual CIP. If approved by the board today, we have to hurry up and get our package ready because we will be on for the January eighth Planning Commission meeting. And we're prepared to do that. And the timing of that is gonna be such that Ms. Andrews is gonna do a presentation on what is called the Glasscock, which is us being an instrumentality of the state. At that meeting will also be St. Mary's College coming in for a tower and Metcom coming in with a project, all three of which would be Glasscock cases, which would be instrumentalties of the state, which would be just for the finding of consistency. So the Planning Commission is a public meeting. All sites will be considered at one time. Our whole goal is just to get pre-approved to have all of the sites that we identify based on our individual location and zoning. And then the compliance, once approved with compliance, it would not expire, provided that there's no changes to the comprehensive land use plan or to the project. So our whole goal is to go there with the list of the secondary sites plus E-Lift, get their concurrence and then that allows us to put out a request for proposal to see interest now and in the future. So the board action that we're asking for today is based on the current practice of the board approval of the CIP that is forward for a similar compliance finding. Is that the board action on the development of commercial communication towers, projects at secondary school sites should be taken to the Planning Commission? And that, given the proximity of multiple sites under consideration to proximity to PACS, that we would coordinate our efforts with them as well as we continued on with the project. So our next steps, based on your concurrence, we would go to the Planning Commission for seeking a finding of compliance with comprehensive land use plan. Based on their approval, we have been working very closely with Mr. Hall in purchasing. And we have a request for proposal drafted. It is a very, very good working draft based on the approval of the Planning Commission. Our intent would be to issue that at the end of January to seek interest in sites. If we got proposals back, we would then have to work with that, that vendor to develop all of the development review that would be required, including state, federal and county approvals. So our whole goal would be maybe this summer, we would have the ability to have some towers and some new lights for some of our fields put up. So our action today is that the Board of Education approves staff to move forward with the potential construction of commercial communication towers at secondary sites and the E-Lift site, including requesting a compliance review from the St. Mary's County Planning Commission and the issuing of a request for proposals.
All right. I think this is a really awesome plan. It's very mutually beneficial for everyone involved. Nice little symbiosis there. It has multiple pros on every side, the, the carrier benefits and the, the revenue benefits. And it's the nice touch with the, with the football field. I think that would be really awesome. On the student perspective, the cellular service is much needed. At the schools, it's slowly been improving, but tech is of course so ubiquitous, particularly even using your phones, people might think that's a little counterproductive, but we are very applied with our devices in schools, like a bring-your-own-device, it's much used in the classroom, so this will be very appreciated. But I do have a question on what the timeline would be for getting an established agreement between the vendors and the carriers? And is there a possibility that they may not agree to that?
So the, the proposal that we will put out will specify very clearly what our expectations are gonna be for the vendor that, that puts in a proposal. We would not waive off of those requirements. Because i- if, if we wanted to make a change, say we got solicitation back and we really needed to think about what we were doing, we would have to put the proposal back out. We know that there is interest in at least one of the sites, potentially multiple. And I think once this is out there, it will generate and we have a successful partnership, it will continue to, to go out. So one of the things we have to do is figure out on that request for proposal, it'll come in, we could reissue, we could make this an annual, semi-annual opportunity to do that. We've looked at other proposals that have yielded results, so I think we have a good proposal going forward that should solicit and get some responses.
Awesome, thank you.
I have no questions other than your proposals win-win.
I, I got a couple of questions. What is E-Lift?
So E-Lift is a piece of property that was acquired south of the intersection of Great Mills and Five. It backs right up to the Stewart's Grant property. It is a sixty-five acre parcel that was bought for future development, has the potential to house multiple facilities on it, including an elementary school and a middle school when the time arises for our need.
There's no field or anything there right now or anything, right?
No, it's, no, it's, it's
It's currently being farmed.
Yeah.
It's a working farm.
It's farmed, yeah. Okay, okay. So another question I have is, I would just wanna make sure I'm hearing this right. So the money received when these towers get going and everything, they're gonna be to upkeep the grounds of the fields and everything, it's gonna be put back into?
In, within programmatic, we currently have fields and grounds funding that we're getting. It's, it's slowly been building and Mr. Watson maintains those funds and has projects planned out of how we're going to, to use those. This would be a supplement to that, to assist him in bringing projects across all of the athletic fields, further advanced his ability to do those projects.
Okay, and so how will it be reported so we can see the progress and how much?
The funding would come in, it would come in through our office and then be put into our financial records. There would be an account set up for it and it would be a trackable account, just like any of our other capital projects. It would be a revenue source. We have a Fund Twelve, for instance, that we get reimbursement checks from SMECO for our demand response programs that we would do and that is completely auditable as well.
Okay, so you said they count twelve?
That is a Fund Twelve. That would be up to Ms. Moore exactly how she wants to set that up, but it would be put into a annual account.
Okay, okay, thank you, that's all, thanks.
I have any questions, thank you.
Good job, I think you did a good job researching this project. You talked with surrounding counties, you talked with the county. So you know exactly what you're doing, you did a lot of work and thank you for this wonderful presentation.
Appreciate it.
So I, I understood you to say that you'd be working with PACS River on some of this? 'Cause I know with several of the sites, there could be a concern about the height of the towers, so I wanna make sure we're, we're in compliance there. The lights you mentioned, are they going to replace only the light on the pole that they take down? So they're not, and will they, those be the, the same as all the other lights that are, that are on the field?
Right, so one of the, it's a very good question. One of the things we originally thought about, because we had another option. And, and we really looked at it and we thought that doing an annual yielded us a better result. One of the options that we had, and we had early discussions when we were talking about this, was instead of taking an annual allowance, we would ask that the carrier, when they came in and they were installing that, that they install all of the new lights. That worked really well for the high schools. Middle schools and E-Lift, it didn't work as well. And when we really looked at it and we did the financial analysis, Um, middle schools and ELIF, it didn't work as well, and when we really looked at it and we did the financial analysis, it was more cost advantage for us to go ahead and get the annual, knowing that additional carriers are going to hopefully want to come hang on them. The generation of annual revenue to allow those projects to continue was far in excess of what it would cost to replace the lights. So we can continue to do that through the programmatic and capital funds.
Especially knowing that, um, after a period of time, we'll have to replace the surfaces on the, um, high school fields.
Yes.
Um, and that's a pretty pricey endeavor, that, um, this funding will hopefully, um, help with that as well. Um, and then the fenced site with their, um.
Electrical equipment.
The electrical, um, is that going to be in close proximity to that pole, or will that be some distance away, because?
In Charles County, I, they've given us evidence of both.
Okay.
So it really will be site-specific, um, the determination of which light pole will be replaced with this, um, technology will also have to be calibrated for the, the carrier.
Okay.
Um, so it will be different to each site specific. The whole goal is to minimize the footprint as best that we possibly can, and we'll do everything we can to ensure that it doesn't impede athletes or students in doing what they need to do.
Okay, um, and then lastly, with the ELIF property, um, the location of, since we don't know what school might be needed there, or what that might look like, where it might be positioned, is there going to be an issue if they want to put something on the ELIF property in terms of locating it, um, in the absence of understanding, um, how that property will be utilized in the future?
Right, so that, that would be my biggest concern with that one, we do have some preliminary, when we purchased the property, we did some preliminary layouts. So we know where kind of the footprint of the buildings would go. Um, any tower proposed there would need to be on the outskirts of the property, so to avoid any issues. And any agreement we have on that would also include the fact that the school is, uses a school site, and that would be the, um, primary purpose. And if it needed to be moved, they would have to relocate.
Okay, alright, thank you, that's all my questions.
And I think that one's probably the most challenging of all, it may not have as much interest as some of the others.
I have one last question, so the requirements that we have within the, the contract that we are seeking, are they very similar to what the requirements would be if, if this company was setting it up on private land?
Yes.
Like, or, so we don't have higher barriers to entry that would preclude us from getting a tower as opposed to someone who's like, sure, come and do whatever?
The only, and, the only stipulation that would be different, and, and as a private homeowner, I would probably want the same clause, and there would be that it is a primary function of a school. In the event that we needed to in the, the, um, twenty years that could potentially be the least, is if it was in the way of development of the school and its function, then there would need to be a, a move of that tower.
Okay.
So, yes, while different, but if I was a homeowner or private property, I would want that same kind of requirement on it.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, any other questions? Alright, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approves staff to move forward with the potential construction of commercial communication towers at secondary schools and the ELIF site, including requesting a compliance review from the St. Mary's County Planning Commission and issuing a request for proposals.
Do I have a second? Um, I don't have that one though.
It's right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's.
Is that updated?
Yeah, no.
I see this one, but it's one, a different one on the screen, so which one's the most up-to-date one? Is that something that you just came up with after we got this information?
Hold on one second.
I think it's the same, I think that one's just reworded.
It's, it's reordered.
Yeah.
But it's saying the same thing, correct? The same thing.
Which one should be?
I read the one from that one.
Yeah, read the one that's in the.
Read the one in here because this, this follows the actual process.
The one, okay, thank you.
This follows the process, that one, it's flipped.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That the Board of Education approves staff to move forward with requesting a compliance review from the St. Mary's County Planning Commission and issuing a request for proposals for the potential construction of commercial communication towers at secondary schools and the ELIF site.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion is carried, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. That's what I know. More air conditioning units, chiller replacements.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm here today to present four items, so be patient with me. Um, this one is for the contract award for the general contractor for the chiller replacement at Mechanicsville Elementary School. Um, the request is to approve a contract in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand two, six hundred twenty to provide the construction services and twenty thousand dollars for contingency for Gagan Mechanical Inc. for the chiller replacement at Mechanicsville Elementary School. Uh, this project was not part of the currently, uh, limited renovation that we are doing, uh, Mechanicsville. The project did not include a, anything about HVAC other than controls for the system. Um, so it was very important to keep the chiller on in this, uh, group of four that we ha- uh, put together with Ms. Howe. And, um, this, we bid it separately, um, and then I will come back later on for the other three, uh, projects for the chiller replacements. Um, they are, in, in the project details, they're together, but they're really separate projects for the state purposes. Um, we have, uh, as a background, you know, it's, it's a chiller that is exceeded the life expectation. Typically, an air-cooled chiller, it's between fifteen to twenty years. This one, by the time we re- uh, purchase it and install, it's going to be twenty-three, twenty-two to twenty-three years old. So definitely we took, we've used all the life of it, we, uh, extended, and we're going to get our money back from using this chiller. Um, the procurement method is our traditional, uh, multi-step procurement where we, uh, first advertise for pre-qualification. We determine, you know, it's, it's a pass of failed, based on, on financial information, based on expertise, experience, legal standing, all that. And then we put out, uh, a second part for those that have been pre-qualified. We, uh, advertised on, on RFP on EMA on September twentieth of this year. We had five hundred eighty contractors that received notification. We got eight, uh, contractors submitted their, um, technical proposals on October fourth. Out of those eight, six of them were invited to pre-qualify, invited to submit a bid on October thirteenth. And five of them submitted a bid on November ninth. Um, Gagan Mechanical Inc., it's our, uh, recommended selection. They're a well-known contractor, um, in the DC area. Um, they work for the federal government in different projects, uh, and lately they've worked for us uh, in seven, in two projects right now. Um, well, in one project, it's, uh, Chopticon. The base bid, it's a hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and twenty. Um, and they were asking for a contingency of twenty thousand. I included the financial information of what funds we have available per state and local funds, we will, uh, have a balance, so this is good news. Uh, I always like to see that we will have balance, because that means that I can really perform and do award and get the project going. Um, and at this moment, I, uh, as the Board of Education approved this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
I have no questions, but thank you for an awesome presentation as always.
Uh, you're replacing a sixty-ton unit with another sixty-ton unit?
Yes, it's in kind.
The cost per, per ton's about twenty-five hundred, that's, that's in line with.
Yep.
That's a good measuring stick. So you, you got, you're getting a good price.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
No questions?
Thank you.
Questions, thank you.
I want to say Mechanicsville Elementary School looks wonderful. At night, it's beautiful, it's lit beautifully, you can see the Mustang, uh, from the first slide. It is absolutely beautiful, and, um, everybody did a wonderful job to make this come together. And it's something we had wanted to do for a long time, and it just kept getting pushed away, because we didn't have what funding. But it's beautiful in that community, the teachers, the students, and the community who will benefit from that will enjoy it, and I know they are very proud of the school. Wonderful job, thank you.
It, it is absolutely beautiful.
And if it was really hot inside, they wouldn't love it as much, and so this is going to make sure that it's actually cool inside, what it needs to be.
Very true.
Carry on top.
I, I do not have any questions about the presentation or the request.
We just need an action there, I'm done.
I'm waiting, anything else?
I move that the Board of Education approve the construction award to Gaggen Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred twenty dollars and a construction contingency in the amount of twenty thousand for the chiller replacement at Mechanicsville Elementary School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Mary had it up, so I just figured she was just rolling right through.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, next up is Piney Point Elementary.
Okay, I'm back here for the award of a general contractor for the systemic HVAC renovation at Piney Point. Um, they requested for approval award, a contract in the amount of ten million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand to provide construction services and three hundred eighty thousand dollars for contingency. To Paramount Mechanic Corporations for the systemic HVAC at Piney Point Elementary. Um, a little bit of background of the scope of this project. Uh, we're going from a traditional HVAC unit from the nineteen nineties, uh, to a more modern, uh, system, uh, called VRF, uh, variable refrigerant flow system, so a little bit of background without going into too much technical. Um, we have a lot in our schools, the traditional, uh, BAB boxes, which were airflow through it. And you see, uh, unit ventilators in the classrooms, like by the windows. Um, and that's, we're replacing this one with a little bit more energy-efficient, uh, uh, more modern version of a VRF. We've had some installed recently, uh, in little, uh, applications, maybe art rooms in smaller areas. Uh, we did, uh, did that in Mechanicsville. Uh, now it's the first school that we're going to go, I believe, in since I've been here with a whole full school. Uh, it's a traditional one that you see more often now in commercial buildings where it has like a cassette in a whole ceiling tile. Looks, uh, like the picture I'm going to share with you later. And, um, it will provide, uh, what we call the DOAS, which is, it will provide humidity control to a building. Uh, something that we put into consideration, especially in this school, when we sat down with the designer, the proximity of the school being right in the critical area, having the water so close to it. Every air, the fresh air that you're going to bring in will have an increased humidity that we will have to, um, take care of. And you see, when you walk Piney Point, you see right now the ceiling tiles are all bending. That's the first inclination that we need to increase humidity control. Um, so it was very important for us to go with a system like this, uh, make sure we can afford it. Sometimes we can't afford it, because the prices comes with the tag, you know, you know, you, you want more system. Uh, we're also replacing, uh, uh, an antiquated nineteen nineties heating plant with a more ef- high, eh, efficiency propane boilers. Um, and will include all the, um, re- uh, work that is associated with all the ceiling. Um, anything above the ceiling is what I would like to include. Um, and you will see later on in the slides or in the, uh, attachments that I've started putting a lot of alternates, because I don't know what the prices are going to come out. And at least I want to be able to pick up the base bid and then be able to pick up some alternates if I have some leftover money. And I, I added the pictures here of what a unit ventilator versus a cassette is, or, or, or an oil, uh, uh, oil boiler versus, uh, propane boiler, so a little bit more modern, and that's the way we should be thinking. Uh, multi-purpose, uh, multi-step procurement was done the same way we, we always do for our state projects, uh, first for technical and then price proposal. Uh, we advertised on our RFP on E-Maryland Marketplace on September fifth. We got four hundred ninety-one contractors that received notification. Out of those, five contractors submitted technical proposals. The five were pre-qualified, and three firms submitted bids on December first. Uh, for our selection, we're recommending Paramount Mechanical Corporation located in, uh, Manassas, Virginia. They recently have been very interested in working with us. They, they, this is the same contractor that the diner, same contractor, they're currently finishing Town Creek. Um, they've done other federal projects too, uh, very well-known in the area. Um, the proposed fee is a base bid of nine million four hundred ninety-eight thousand. And then I'm proposing, uh, three alternates. Uh, alternate one being the ceiling tiles and grid, um, makes sense when you are removing so much dot work. Um, that change all the ceiling makes sense now that the ceilings are failing, because I, I, like I said, they bend, they look bad. It, it's a very good lift, although it's up, you, it, it does make the room look nicer. Um, the fire alarm was also a, a, a no-brainer to modify, since we're going to be above the ceiling, makes sense to go ahead now. Um, it, it was, it's due to replace by the time we finish this project, so it makes sense to pick up that alternate too. And then, uh, we added new VCT floors in the classroom for several reasons. When we remove the unit ventilators, there'll be areas where we will have to patch. Being an older school, there, there's a big chance that I cannot find the same VCT. Um, they are also in due, eh, due to replacement, so makes sense to add it now. And while it's not much compared to the scope of work, it does lift the classroom once we put money in HVAC. Sometimes we can't, um, uplift the classroom enough, everything is above and people don't see it. I like to at least throw a little bit of floor or paints, he, if I can afford, to change and, and refresh the classrooms. Um, I added the financial summary, um, to show you all the bidders with the different alternates and also the budget, uh, of what we have and the funding that we have from the state. Uh, I am going to use every single penny, uh, included for the contingency. And with the contingency, eh, you know, I, I never know if I'm going to have to use it in something that I don't see above the ceiling, or if I can save money. In the past, Town Creek, for example, to give you an explanation, um, the contingency, we were very good um, monitoring the expenses that we had during change orders. And that led us to go back now to add, uh, LED lights to classrooms that we were not able to, uh, afford. So that, that's something that we always like to do, you know, to put back into the classrooms. Um, so here I will monitor and see what else I can do if I have leftover from the alternates that I was not able to pick. Um, and at this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
I have no questions, thank you.
Um, any hazmat material, any allowance at all for unseen hazmat?
The, I am not sure about this project though. Um, but we do have contingency always in our projects, because more recently, we're finding, um, asbestos in the, uh, union of the duct that we did not know, we did not had in our documents, uh, that when we, um, do yearly ins- eh, eh, inspections. So it's something that we always, before we start demo, we, um, the contractor will have to determine. Lady Marshall was one, that we knew we had asbestos in the floor, but now we found more. Um, even after we removed the, the first phase, we removed, um, the insulation, which we know is very typical to have it, uh, we also found in the ceiling of the ducts. Um, so it's, it's something. So it's, it's something that we always take in consideration.
And yeah, I noticed your contingency, like you said, is low, it's about three percent.
I'm using everything I have.
Pardon?
I'm using everything I have.
Okay, good. Good for you.
Thank you for explaining because I was trying to figure out why the fire alarm system, but oh, it makes sense. It's above the ceiling, why not take care of it at the same time? Thank you for that. And then my only question is on, on the slide, but go back one. Yes, the commissioning agent.
Yes, so when we do HVAC, we like to hire a third party to do all the testing balancing of a system that it's basically a consultant that tells the owner that what the designer designed and the construction built, it's really what we are paying for. It's a, it's a, a lot of testing has to come out after all the equipment is installed. And they'll give us some reports and they will adjust basis. It's a very time consuming, but it's a, it's a, it's a very well fun used.
Oh, yeah.
For to make sure that the end of the day, the, the system is balanced, the system is designed and installed correctly.
Thank you, thank you for explaining that.
I don't have any questions, Mary.
And I want to thank you for putting down an alternative to new ceiling tile. Because if they are warped, eventually they will have to be replaced anyway, that's a good time to do it. And the fire alarm and the flooring, because you say you probably won't find the flooring to match. So it's just good to have all the flooring to match. Even though the school is old, it looks really good inside as most of our agent schools look. So people and students are proud to be a student there and to be workers there. So thank you for that.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the construction award to Paramount Mechanical Corporation in the amount of ten million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. And a construction contingency in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand dollars for the systemic HVAC renovation at Piney Point Elementary School.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, just continue on. Your show, Chopticon High School.
Chopticon High School, this is one that have been a lot of talks in the past. It's a project that will be our biggest project and we are putting all our heart on it. We wanna bring Chopticon to, to today's standards and, and wanna make sure we, we invest well. Whatever money we will use, we'll use it in the, in the right way to make our students and staff learn better. So right now I'm here for the contract award of Architectural Engineering Services for limited renovation of Chopticon High School. And the request is approval contract award in the amount of two million, six hundred seventy-eight thousand and fifty dollars for architectural services and two hundred seventy-five thousand for design contingency to Wheeler Goodman Masick and Associates, known as WGM, to provide professional architectural engineering consulting services for the limited renovation. A little bit of background, we have currently approved on our capital improvement program funds to design this project. Funding has been allocated since this year and it will continue for two more years. We are expected to start the construction in FY twenty-six if everything goes well and Ms. Howe can make magic happen. Design, construction budget is sixty-seven million. That's what we're planning right now for construction. And we're here to request a, a, a prime services of an architectural firm so that they hire all the sub consultants to come up with a design for all the specialties. An explanation of the scope, this is what we've started with, this is how we put the RFP. You know, we outside will be cleaning, painting. We added a possibility of something in the entry to enhance. Perhaps something similar or in the same scope of what we did for Mechanicsville where, without changing much. We did something to, you know, show the people that drive by that there, something new happened to the school. The envelope for sure, we know that we are in need of windows and doors replacements. It will help with the indoor air quality too because the windows are failing. And it makes sure, you know, we do a, a, a building that it's tight, it's better for energy efficiency. And then the roof replacement, it's also included. In the interior, we're gonna try to, you know, include some finishes, paint, ceilings, update the locker rooms that are in need. The students are always asking for better locker rooms. And then update all the bathrooms to be ADA throughout. Structure, we will need to do some structure changes for the HVAC that will require. A bit, we know that, that there's asbestos in school still, so we will make sure we take all of it out. Mechanical, you know, heating plant controls. And then electrical, changing all the lighting system, telecommunications, fire alarm. Plumbing will also, you know, include all the plumbing fixtures, potable water system, sanitary and store system. Fire protection sprinklers, again, everything above the ceiling too. And then we are hoping to include the space updates for the science lab that have been so long being discussed. I think since I started here, I would did the study for the science labs. It's, it's like priority number one to make sure we bring those classrooms to today's standards. Cafeteria and kitchen also need some uplift. There's, there's talks about how kids now buy food in cafeterias, which is different of what we are still serving now. How, you know, changing the, the counter, the lines of how you buy. We're all talking about it with the architect already. There's a possibility to try because the kitchen, the cafeteria and the media center are interior spaces. The light is very limited, so there's, since we're doing the roof, there's a, a time us to include some natural light from above. And then the media center, again, it's also a space that has changed of how we do books now and what these spaces look like now. It's not just books, it's a different space. So we're, we're conversing with the architect and see how we can make this school look different. Our FEBE policy let us do pre qualification for consulting services, expression of interest, evaluation of technical qualifications, a shortlist with the most highly qualified and experienced firms. Then we pick architect, engineer architect consultant selection and we negotiate with the highest rank. This was a very difficult decision. We, we thought thoroughly how to pick the best candidate for this particular project. The, we put it out on EMA on September twentieth, we had a lot of interest. Got eleven consultants submitted their technical qualifications. We also added the price proposals. And that was a way of us determining how, where can we extend our funds better? Because we know that these all eleven firms will be able to do a, a project. They are all working in education, so K to twelve, that's what they know how to do and they're specialized. Now how can we pick from eleven? So we added thirty percent fee, percentage for fees. And that's how we were able to pick the, the shortlist to see who, who can give us better with less funds. That, we invited those three for an oral presentation, which our, our, our FEBE policy allows us to do an oral presentation, COMR two. So we invited them and they came, three of them did a magnificent oral presentation. And it was very tough because they leave and you know that either whichever we pick, we're gonna have a very good project. So we had to go back and ask them to come with a little concept of designs of what would they do of the exterior enhancement, what would they do with the cafeteria? And what would they do with the media center and labs? They submitted that and price proposal. Now it's not just by the hourly proposal, now it's how much are you charging me by this scope that I'm telling you? And that's how we ended up recommending to award the architect. Our selection is WGM, which he, that firm is the one that is now doing Mechanicsville Elementary School. They've worked eighteen projects now, so they continue to be good. They are ready to work. One of my really, I was tough on them because I, I wanna make sure that I, they have availability to do this project and almost exclusivity to concentrate in this project with us. They showed us in paper how they have availability and how they're committed to this project. The proposed fee are all, for all the phases as at the moment. Design phases, bidding, construction administration and post-construction. I am understanding that we don't have a proposal yet for a construction. But it, it makes sense to go ahead now and get the proposal and approve it for all of it. And they are aware that as of now, we got just approval for design. The fees, just so you understand, typically are between three and ten percent, construction fees. They are in the fourth, eh, four percent with the fee. So we are getting a good rate with them. And we're asking contingency, design contingency of two hundred and seventy-five thousand. At this moment, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the agenda item as presented and I am open for questions.
I know that the students of Chopticon will be really excited. I'm sure this moved through specifically with the science labs. I know I would be super excited about that. It would be awesome to finally have those finished. But I have no questions, so thank you.
Those, those grade Whitmarsh students are gonna be very appreciative of when they arrive at Chopticon High School.
Whitmarsh students did not comment on their science fair.
Yeah, I was surprised, I was surprised. Well, they were talking about so many other things too though, so.
Jim, do you have any questions?
How many, if any, contractors offered a bid that were from the county? Any?
Architect? No.
Not at all?
No. The, the, the biggest problem of that, eh, understanding that our requirements for architect, one of them is the experience in K through twelve. I don't think we have any architect locally based in town or in the county that have experience designing K through twelve. And there is a lot to it. These people have worked years with IIC, Public Construction, to know what are their requirements. And it's not just a commercial building, it's not even an institutional building. K to twelve is a different.
A different animal.
Yeah, thank you.
I was kind of surprised with the number, the sixty-seven million, understanding that the architect is going to prepare the scope and then come up with a more finite estimate. But I just was surprised with that number, that, that, that you came up with sixty-seven million. I'm not saying it's wrong. I just, you know, it's, that's a major, major renovation.
Well, with Chopticon, you, correct me, but I mean, you have like two separate buildings, right? I mean, and that's part of the problem, especially with the, with the air conditioning. So you, I think part of this renovation is gonna somehow combine and make the flow between the two more efficient?
For the HVAC? Yes. The, the, we look at this building since the study and we started with if, if even we consider demolishing the back part, which is the older portion of Chopticon and start, you know, a completely new building. And the funds were not there. So this is just a limited renovation. And we are in, in, in good numbers compared to other jurisdictions too, so this is real.
And, and, and understand, like, other school systems, neighboring school systems, would just simply knock down Chopticon and then, and then find and then be funded locally for a hundred and twenty million dollars or more to build a new high school. That's, that's what other counties do. We, like, we, you know, we, we keep on getting questioned and we will. And we have been questioned throughout this entire process. Well, it's cost a lot, well, it's cost a lot. Well, you know, we can certainly knock down Chopticon completely and not, and lose that, the governor's word, legacy building, right? Or we can really take the time to thoughtfully invest and update something that has great value to multi-generations who have gone through that school. Like, this is the kind of conversation we keep on coming back to with all of our buildings is, I watch other school systems knock down schools that still have life to build something new right next to it. And, and I really do believe that the character of St. Mary's County is such that we keep on going back and we repurpose the buildings that we have because we all are attached to the structures that we have. Like, the Southern Maryland Market in Leonardtown, in Leonardtown, where you see the repurposing of these existing buildings. Other communities just knock that stuff down and build a, you know, something right next to it. I, I really think that, and, and the architect, I mean, Paula has like, everybody really has taken this to heart and going through and talking to the architects and seeing the creative ways that they're going to address the, the challenges of renovating, a phased renovation in an occupied building to do all those things. I mean, it really is amazing. And at the very end, you end up with something very, very special. And as an example, Mechanicsville Elementary School, all right? Most, most schools would, most systems would just gone in there and flattened that building and built another one right next to it, or flattened several of those little buildings and built a big elementary school someplace where you'd have seven hundred or eight hundred kids. We have very actively made decisions to invest in and maintain all of our, all of our inventory of buildings because people are really, are really attached to them. So to all the generations who have attended Chopticon High School and hold it dear to heart, that is the reason why we're, why we're doing this. And I, so I'm gonna get off my soapbox now, but, but the diligence that staff has done with all elements of this is this has evolved over the last seven or eight years. I mean, it has been something that we've been staring at and working on for seven or eight years. I'm excited by how close we are today. And probably this will be the last large construction project that, that, that I'm, I'm part of in St. Mary's County. And, and I just have to say, I'm, I'm very proud, I'm very proud of the work that's, that's happened to date. So just thank you.
The only thing I can tell you is the biggest complaint I got when we had the open house in Mechanicsville is that how Mechanicsville doesn't look like Mechanicsville anymore.
It just looks too darn good.
I, I can guarantee you, we're gonna keep the building in, in Chopticon, but it's not gonna look like Chopticon anymore when inside, when we bring these spaces, you know, to, to today's standards.
I, I will admit that when you look at a building, the structure, the roof, the exterior cladding, you look at that and that's the major cost of building, it isn't. The HVAC, electrical systems, the fire alarm systems, the conveyance, all of the other stuff that you don't see is where the prices are. And I understand all that, but I still think it's a lot of money.
Well, we agree, it's been eye-popping. Every time we come back, we're like, how much?
Right, it increased already. So Dorothy?
I appreciate your tenacity to get us the best one and you were firm all the way to the end. And I appreciated all of that scrutiny you did to get us the best.
I, I lost sleep.
She really, she really did. We had meetings on this because there were such great options on a table. And so, and you, eventually you just have to make a call.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
So under plumbing, you have storm system. Is that storm water system management?
Yes, well.
Because, you know, there, there's water everywhere at that place. So if we can evaluate and figure out as we're doing it.
And there is more coming.
More water?
No. More, more scope to plumbing other than this, what was done already in the study. We're getting more information from maintenance, so we're gonna look into how are we going to get and possibly adjust the, the construction budget. There are some indications that we have terra cora in the building. So if we have that, then this is a time to replace that too. That was done after the study.
Okay.
That was discovered after the study. So yes, it, it's gonna be a fun project. While it's occupied, so we are already starting to think how are we gonna do the swing space during this project? How are we doing the face? How are we doing the facing to disrupt minimally the school? Because it's a high school.
I can't wait. We're going to have so much fun.
I want to also thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. For your diligence and having the contractors go through an additional step by providing their concept of what the media center would look like, what the cafeteria would look like. Because things have changed. Schools are not what they looked like when the school was built. Things have changed. So I really appreciate all the hard work that you went through to bring it to this level, that they gave you concepts, so you have a general idea of what it can be. And I know the citizens, students, many of them will be gone, but they appreciate, you know, the renovation. In St. Mary's County, we maintain our neighborhood schools, so people will feel pride living in their neighborhood, that they don't want to flee and go to a school that looks better. We maintain our schools in place. And even though they are aging the schools in number of years, our schools look very good inside and outside. And I like that about St. Mary's County. We just, like the superintendent say, we just don't tear down buildings. We always continuously improve them.
We build up, not tear down.
Okay. Ooh, I like that.
And legacy. Not my word governors.
Kathy, do you have anything?
I I think we only need to look to Great Mills High School, recognizing that the there's a part of that building that is from nineteen twenty-nine, I believe. And to know that, you know, we 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 practice what we preach, absolutely.
As we get older, we really appreciate people keeping around older things. As you get older, you're like, yeah, you have.
He looked at me when he said that.
I did not. I looked in I looked in general. I looked off to the.
You're in trouble.
Yeah, I know. I'm always in trouble.
At any rate, thank you very much. I am excited for this project to finally start to get off the ground. And I hope we continue to go nowhere but up other than with the cost. So thank you very much.
State funding should be on everyone's Christmas wish list for Chopticon. Right. All right. Can I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approved a construction award to Wheeler Goodman, Masick, and Associates in the amount of two million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, fifty dollars, and a construction contingency in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for professional architectural engineering consulting services for the limited renovation at Chopticon High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. And your show continues with the reissue of the bid for Great Mills High School.
Diligence.
My last one of the day is to reject a single bid received and reissue the invitation for bid for general contractor for the partial roof replacement phase two at Great Mills High School. The request is to approve, to reject the single bid received and reissue the invitation per the Comar fourteen thirty-nine oh three oh eight one two due to receiving only one responsive bid for SMCPS twenty-twenty-four oh six DSSDC for the general contractor for the partial roof replacement phase two at Great Mills High School. And we went back to Comar. And again, we identified two lines, one that give us the right to, if we get a single bid, if after proper publication of the invitation for bid and proper bid opening, the LEA received one responsive bid, the LEA may reissue the invitation to bid. And also negotiated an award after unsatisfactory competitive seal bidding. We shall reissue an invitation for revised bids based on revised specifications to the original bidders, pre-qualified bidders, as promptly as possible. A little bit of background, back in twenty-twenty, during the pandemic, we we went and did half of the building, which you see in the aerial picture included. You see the different color. Now we need to go back to do the rest of it. It's a twenty-six-year-old buildup roof. And we are hoping to still be able to complete it on during the summer of twenty-four and twenty-five. Back this, the left side was done during one summer, and it was very tough. But the good thing is that we were during pandemic, so we were able to access the building after the school started, and we were able to complete. We know this is a little bit bigger portion, and we know we can't complete it all in one summer. We are requesting of a roof contractor firm to serve as a prime contractor. The scope is there. The areas that had the letters is where we know we need to replace. And the base bid was to do it with a three ply buildup roof. We had several alternates. The the one that I always advocate for is instead of a three ply, it was a four ply to give more extended life of the roof. We did the left side with a four ply, so it makes sense to continue with a four ply. We also added the variable bolt overhang roofs at the front as an alternate, and the skylights at the front also as an alternate. With that said, you know, it's it's a strategy to make sure I have money, at least to do the base bid. Well, in this case, I couldn't. And I'll show you why. We did the procurement method the same way we do it with a two-step procurement method. We sent notifications to two hundred and seventy-four contractors. Eight of them submitted technical proposals. Three of them were pre-qualified and invited to bid, and only one firm submitted bid on December first. The the only one bid submits a a bid is not something that always will make me come back to you and ask you for a reissue. Because if the numbers are what we expected, if the numbers are what we have estimated by the study, then it makes sense. They sharpened their pencil. They knew what they were doing. And it makes sense if I have the funds to do it. In this case, I don't, and the numbers don't show what we were expecting. What we had in construction was seven million, three hundred and seventy-eight. That was our budget. Just base bid came in two eight point two, so almost a million higher. That what we were estimating. When we did the feasibility study, which was done right after the first part of the building, the price per square footage was going to be twenty-eight. That's what we paid for the left side. Yes, it was during pandemic. A lot of contractors didn't have work. Prices have escalated over this time. There's a lot of work out there, and I I just don't know anymore how to do business. The price came with this single bid at sixty-five per square foot. So for me, I I just, even if I find place where I don't even know where I could find money to, this is a no-brainer that we need to go back and reissue the bid, reject it and reissue the bid.
Can I ask, can I interject here? Often what will happen is you'll, a single bid contractor, you'll come back and ask for my best and final reconsideration. Did you give that option to them?
We haven't discussed this with this bidder. I think.
Sometimes, you know, you add an extra floor. I mean, I've seen this happen where contractors make honest mistakes. And you just find out if the if if they really understood the scope of work and that they properly do the bid. Sometimes we've done that before. We'll go back and review their bid.
Yeah.
We might value-engineer the project. I just thought it's expensive to to do another procurement. That's another thing you want to try to avoid.
Yes, but the good idea of this is that I'm not going to do another another RFP. We're going to put it out to the same three pre-qualified bidders. With why I'm hoping that the other two that did not submit a bid submit this time, I'm going to remove part of the scope. Part of the scope was to, because Comar asked me, you know, I have to change it. I can't put it out back again the same way. So that's the 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 biggest issue here. But part of the scope we did is, because we thought we had enough funds, we included the lift of the chiller that is currently in the roof through this same project. Well, now I know I don't have funds. I have programmatic funds that I can use to lift the chiller. So I'm going to do it separately with a not with with a HVAC contractor that I can get better pricing, hopefully. And then take this away from them, and that way they don't give me overhead on another contractor. It's going to put more effort on my department, but we're confident that we can do it. So that's probably maybe a reason why some of these roofers did not want to bid on this when they saw that they that this was part of their requirement. Maybe it makes them more appealing. Also, what I'm proposing is I I had this estimated to do it in two summers. I am going to ask them to do it in three summers. That way, some of them might be interested that they, at this time, they might have already their summer booked, and it was too much for them. So if I open it to three summers, I can still do it and get more interest from them. So that's another change that I'm proposing. So it would not cost me more other than two more weeks to put it out there for them to come back. It's I I might come in next month and says, didn't work. I will have to sit down back in the drawing board and come with a different strategy. It it was, for me, it's unethical to go back and ask contractor that asks for sixty-five percent square footage to sharpen their pencil when I know it's overpriced.
Yes, I I agree. If you're a million dollar, you have a delta of a million dollars, you got to do something. Kudos for you on that. I just thought that, and you answered my question about procurement, because I know just going out to bid, it's very expensive. Expensive also for the bidders. People don't realize, you know, if you get ten bidders, they're spending, collectively, they're spending a lot of money. So I I'm sorry, interruption.
It's okay. It's okay. It was a very good question.
And she covered the next slide.
Yep. So the next steps is to reject the single bid received, revise the specifications, change the removal of the chiller, extend the timeframe, and then put it as fast as I can so I can get a, hopefully I can get a better price. And at this time, I ask that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
I have no questions, but thank you for being so thorough and coming back and, you know, having the good the good conscience to do to do the business as it should be done. So thank you.
I have no more questions.
I'm good. Thank you.
I don't think there is Kathy?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education reject the single bid received and approve the request to reissue the invitation to bid for the general contractor for the partial roof replacement phase two at Great Mills High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, everyone. Everyone's jumping in. All right. Others in favor?
Aye.
Others opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have two information items. Ms. McCourt. The screen looks different every time. Good morning. Before you is the financial report as of November. On the revenue side, we have year-to-date revenues of one hundred and forty-seven point four million and a balance of one hundred and thirty-seven point four million against the two hundred and eighty-four million dollar budget, which represents revenues received year-to-date of fifty-one point seven seven percent. So on target, our interest income is exceeding our budget pretty substantially by two hundred and thirty-five percent, which is actually in alignment with how we ended last fiscal year. On the expenditures side, we have incomferences outstanding of one hundred and seventy-three point two million dollars, predominantly salary incomferences. Year-to-date incomferences and expenses of two hundred and fifty-nine million dollars, representing ninety point ninety-two percent of our budget. And there are no noted areas of concern. Are there any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
All right. Tammy, if you just want to roll right into the budget preview. So we're going to start off our FY twenty-five budget preview by reviewing a couple of the slides from the last meeting. And then we'll talk about the legislative services, economic, financial presentations that they've been putting out, as well as yesterday's county commissioner budget presentation and some of the known items for our FY twenty-five budget. And I wanted to circle back around to the enrollment projection for St. Mary's County Public Schools, specifically the one hundred and fifty-five student decrease or the three-year rolling average decrease of one hundred and forty-six students. Because what I was remiss in discussing last week was there's not a one-for-one expenditure decrease as a result of this. However, there is a one-to-one revenue decrease because our revenues are based on per statute, per pupil allocation. So although we do have a decrease in revenues, we don't have a direct decrease in expenditures. As a matter of fact, this decrease in number of students, it's the equivalent of one student per grade, per school, across a school district. So if it were to be collapsed to one school, that would be the equivalent of five classrooms or five classroom teachers, but unfortunately, it's not. And that seems to be a confusing point to a lot of folks. The assumption is always that if we have a decrease in enrollment, we would have a decrease in costs. And when we do look at the blueprint funding, it is based on, as I stated, a per pupil allocation per statute based on foundation funding, compensatory education, pre-K, English language learners, special education, transitional supplemental instruction, and college and career. As you note, the the largest component of our revenues is foundation, and that's because that is provided to the school district for K through twelve students, but not pre-K. So that's our largest component of our revenue source. However, that change is only increasing by one point seven percent. But the Consumer Price Index is increasing by three point six percent.
What's important to note there, too, is that that is, we don't receive eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars or next year, eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars in its entirety. It is wealth equalized, which means the state gives us half, and then the county is to give us the other half.
That's correct. And the wealth equalization, we will not know the results of that until January. And that will be after the governor submits his budget. Then MSDU can come back and provide us the estimates for FY twenty-five. The governor isn't due to submit his budget until the third Wednesday of January or January seventeenth.
And the better the county does, both in income tax and property value, the less the state provides to us.
That's correct.
Under the assumption that the county will pick up the remaining funds.
Well, under the the same assumption that drives the United States, meaning the more you have, the more you should contribute.
And of course, as our reduction in enrollment are bringing our numbers down, this increase of one point seven percent, for example, is not maintaining the level of income that we need to cover our standard operating costs going into the new school year.
In fact.
In fact, we have um provided our own level of projections, if you will, uh, that is representative based on today's wealth index, not the updated wealth index. And we already know that we have some decreases. The transition grant, which is not tied to enrollment at all, there are twelve school districts in the state that are receiving this, there will be a decrease per statute of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's a known factor. Our number of compensatory education or farm students is decreasing. Therefore, we have an estimated eight hundred and four thousand dollar decrease to that line. The statute amount for the transitional supplemental instruction per student has decreased for next school year. We've estimated that to be two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar decrease. And all of this is prior to the wealth equalization formula being put in place.
And those three are tied to how many students were enrolled at the end.
The transition grant is not tied to the number of students at all. It's statute-defined. The compensatory education funding is tied to the number of s- farms applicants that we receive as of September thirtieth. The transitional supplemental instruction number is tied to last year's MCAP scores for third grade as a basis to determine the number of students that are not uh
Grade level proficiency.
Grade level proficient for K through third grade, which is a mouthful.
And since MCAP is flawed.
And the law refers to levels that aren't currently being used. Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of challenges, but long story short, six hundred thousand dollars less.
Right. Yes, and MSD is working through the details of those flaws. So in prepar- preparation for next year's budget, we spend a lot of time reviewing the Department of Legislative Services res- reports on economic forecasts. Um, specifically, they have issued papers um as well as spending affordability briefings, and they provide really great resources um and reference points as to where St. Mary's County is as compared to other counties within the state. So if you look at the far right column, what we see is that the average annual increase for local taxes for St. Mary's County is four point nine percent. One column over, you see for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, it was five point nine percent increase. And two columns over from that, you see a percentage increase in twenty-two, twenty-three, a three point eight percent. And every one of those cases, you'll, you'll see is St. Mary's County is consistently generating higher revenues as a percentage increase than the state on average. And twenty-two, twenty-three, the state average was a negative one point one percent. And twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, it was a three percent compared to our five point nine percent. And the average state was point nine percent as compared to our four point nine percent.
So go back to the wealth equalized part. The state gives less to the counties that are doing better, and we're doing better consistently than the state each year.
The other thing I'd like to point out on this slide are the total local taxes in twenty-two, twenty-two, three, and twenty-four for St. Mary's County as compared to Charles and Calvert County. And you'll notice that our total local taxes are less at two hundred and sixty-five point seven million in twenty-twenty-two as compared to Calvert at three hundred and thirty-three thousand, or three hundred and thirty-three million, and Charles at four hundred and eighty-nine point nine million. And then in twenty-twenty-four, we have two hundred and ninety-two million, the lowest of the three tri-county areas, as compared to Calvert at three hundred and forty-three million and four hundred and seventy-seven million. And that's really important because that comparison was actually brought up yesterday by the county government's um finance department in their presentation to county commissioners. And specifically laid out on one of their budget presentation screens was the explanation for the difference. And it is because the tri-county area, we are going to be lower because we have a lower tax rate. We also have a lower population, and we also have higher tax credits. So those are the two, three factors that are going, that are driving our local taxes.
And what specifically tax credits are they, are they referencing?
Well, specifically yesterday, they brought up homestead tax credit. So I'm really glad that you brought that up because we're gonna talk about property taxes next.
Okay.
So homestead property tax, the homestead tax credit, they are actually going to be going back and doing analysis and bringing in additional information back in January about what it would mean to increase it from. St. Mary's County is current, currently has a homestead tax credit of three percent. However, the town of Leonardown is at ten percent. Calvert County has no homestead tax credit at ten percent, as well as the state at ten percent, and ten percent is the highest that's allowable in the state. Charles County is at seven percent. That, so that's offsetting the tax revenues to the county.
It suppresses it.
That's correct.
Right.
So St. Mary's County real property rate is at eighty-four point seven eight cents on the dollar. And as you can see, we're following only three other school, um, other counties in the state that are lower than us.
What's really interesting is Talbot, which has always had the lowest tax rate ever. They actually raised their property tax this past year to seven point four, from six point whatever it was, six point eight two, they actually raised it. So Talbot County raised property tax.
Calvert County is at ninety-two point seven, and Charles is a dollar twenty point five.
So we're four from the bottom, and Charles is four from the top.
Yes. And every one cent increase on our property taxes results in one point five million dollars.
So the difference between our eight, four, seven, eight, and, well, even if we go back to what it was originally, which was ninety point something, um, you know, you know, we're, we're talking about seven or eight million dollars worth of property tax that we're not, that we're not receiving.
And of course, you know, I do my back-of-the-mackin calculations. In the budget book is a calculation on the average household fair market value at three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And for every one cent increase, that would be an increase per household of thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Or a five cent increase would be a hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cent increase. So the county is, um, has begun their budget deliberations. They officially kicked it off yesterday. Conversations about property tax increases as far as um the, the real base increasing. Um, what amount should be used for their income tax growth? At this time, they're looking at maintaining their current growth projection of five point two five percent growth increase. They did a deep dive into their estimated revenues. They'll revisit it again in January and continue to monitor those numbers as their income taxes are coming in in this fiscal year. They've received some assessment increase um information from the State Department of Assessments as of uh November thirtieth, but they expect to receive their tri-annual increase notifications in January. And they'll be continuing um many conversations about the budget in January. But as we talk about the budget, um, they brought up this slide. There are lots of numbers on this slide, but at the very top, what you'll see are the revenues that are being generated by the county and what those recurring revenue amounts are, and how much of those recurring revenues are being utilized to support the different agencies of the county. So specifically for the Board of Education, if you go back to two thousand nine nineteen, we received one hundred and four million dollars of the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five million dollars in recurring county revenues, and that represents forty-six point two one percent of their budget. In twenty-twenty-four, we're receiving one hundred and twenty-seven point three million dollars of their two hundred and eighty-nine point eight million dollar recurring revenue budget, which represents now forty-three point nine five percent. So two point two six percentage points of a decrease over that time period. However, if you look at the county government departments, they were at eighteen point oh five percent of the recurring revenues in two thousand nineteen, and then have actually increased by three point oh five percent percentage points to twenty-one point ten percent in the most recent fiscal year.
So the school system costs less by a percentage than it did five years ago.
Although we've had significant state in ma- mandate increases.
Yes, so the school system, when you look at it, and this is, I just wanna draw this point out. So when you look at it, we were a hundred and four million dollars in nineteen, we're now a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. So we've gone up twenty-three million dollars from the county commissioners. And all of that money is above maintenance of effort because maintenance of effort is flat funding. So every single dollar above the dollar from last year really equates to above maintenance of effort. So we are very thankful that they have provided for us twenty-three million dollars more than they were probably mandated by law to provide over the last five years. At the same time, county government was forty million dollars in twenty nineteen, and now it's sixty-one million dollars. So their budget has gone up by twenty-one million dollars, and the sheriff was thirty-eight, and now it's fifty-eight, and they've gone up by twenty million dollars. So um the, the large drivers of the local budget, the school system and the county government and sheriffs and corrections and everything like that, we've all seen increases, but the majority of the increases have gone to agencies on the other side of the street than us. Why that's important, there, is we often hear people say, half of all the money that comes in goes right to the schools, right? If I just pulled somebody off the street and I said, well, where does all your tax money go? They go, well, half of it goes to the school system. Well, it doesn't. It did at one point, but it doesn't now. If half of all of the money that was brought into the county through taxes went to the school system, we'd have a hundred and forty-four million dollars as opposed to a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. Again, we are thankful for every penny above flat funding that we receive, but we are receiving as a percentage less than we had in the past. And in fact.
Of course, the, the commissioners are arguing our, uh, our enrollment's down. And uh, yet you're asking more money.
So, so again, to combat that, our enrollment trend over ten years has been about four hundred kids. So it's, I mean, it is, it is a fraction of a percent over, over that same time.
And when you consider we have almost eighteen thousand students.
Well, the, I mean, e- even so, enrollment being taken, the only reason why we ever talk about enrollment as the, as a cost driver is because the state of Maryland tethers all funding to per pupil allocation, which is ridiculous in that a variance of a couple hundred kids up or a couple hundred kids down doesn't really change your, your cost need. We have a hundred and fifty kids, less than we had last year, but we haven't been, it's not like we can cut a teacher. It's not like we can use less fuel. It's not like we can cancel a bus. It's not like we can change anything we're doing because on average, it works out to be one kid per grade level, per school. So that, that argument is a real challenge. I just come back to, people believe that fifty percent of their taxes in St. Mary's are going to the school, or they believe that their taxes, they, they have to pay more in taxes because it's going to the school. Well, that's true, a portion of it is, but it's not maintaining that same percentage. If you're paying more in taxes over the last several years, yes, some of it has been going to the school system, but the majority of the percent increase has been going to sheriffs, corrections, and county government. And I applaud that, that is awesome. We should be absolutely investing in public safety and access to a fantastic community. I agree, but I do wanna draw this out because when you look at the last twenty years, a big perspective looking, if we went back to twenty twenty, if we went back to two thousand and four, in two thousand and four, you paid three point one percent income tax, and your property tax was point nine zero eight, ninety cents for every one hundred dollars of approved worth. Since two thousand and four, we have lowered taxes in St. Mary's County. Lowered income tax from three point one to three point five, and then from three point oh five to three percent. We lowered property tax from nine point zero eight to eight point seven eight, from eight point seven eight to eight point seven two, from eight point seven two to eight point four, five, seven, from eight five seven to eight five two, from eight five two to eight four eight. That's where we are. And in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, before the pandemic started, we as a whole county said, oh my gosh, we don't have enough revenue to cover the expenses of a high-quality education system in St. Mary's County. We don't have enough money coming in in St. Mary's County to pay for the blueprint. We don't have enough money coming into St. Mary's County to pay for sixty thousand dollars starting salaries for teachers and for pre-K for all of our kids, and we don't ha- we don't have enough money to pay for all of this. So in twenty nineteen, the county made the decision to raise, keeping property tax exactly where it is. The homestead tax credit went from, I think, somewhere in there, from five down to, well, went down to three in the last couple of years. I didn't even add that here, but they raised income tax. And as soon as they raised income tax, the next year, they actually dropped the percentage that went to the school system from forty-eight percent, we were forty-eight percent. They raised the income tax, and when they raised the income tax, they decreased the amount that went to schools. It went from forty-eight to forty-four, and from forty-four to forty-three point six, and then we rebounded a little forty-three point eight nine, forty. So, and after raising it to three dollar, or for three point one seven percent, they lowered the percent that went to schools, and then they lowered that income tax from three point one seven to three point one to three point oh. And now, we heard yesterday, revenues are flat. There's, there's, we're, 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 you know, we're basically, we're on a lights-on budget. Why are we in a lights-on budget? And why are we gonna be vilified, and there will be people who say things about us? Because we're going to have to actually ask for a substantial amount of money to implement the blueprint, and specifically the sixty thousand dollar starting salary for teachers that everybody agreed is appropriate. The bill comes due, the bill comes due, the bill comes due, we all knew the bill was coming due. So, here we are. And I think it's important to make sure that everybody recognizes how we got here. And so, Merry Christmas. I hope that when we get into January, we have a conversation. Because when I go out and talk to people and I hear, you know, taxes are killing me, it doesn't seem to be that anybody realizes that we have the fourth lowest property tax in the state of Maryland. We have one of the lowest homestead tax credits. And after raising income tax, we've lowered it for the last two years, and I haven't heard anybody extolling how great that is. Pennies on the dollar, pennies on the dollar. And now, we will not have, we do not have, and the county commissioners are under no obligation to provide us funding to meet the mandate of the blueprint. But the mandate of the blueprint is law. It's not, you know, I hope you will raise salaries. It is thou shall have a sixty thousand dollar starting salary by July one, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, for the twenty twenty-six school year. So here we are, here's the decisions of the last twenty years. Um, and I, I really just think we need to be really upfront with our conversations about things. And I am not willing to have anybody tell me that their taxes are unbearable because the school system is taking more than they should. We have, we are taking the least amount of money that we have in about twenty years as a percentage to the revenue coming in. So, with that. Why I'm really challenged is because they put forth, again, their multi-year budget that projects, and they're gonna make decisions based on this, I assume, that projects the next five years. And when they're talking about how much education's going to cost in St. Mary's County, they have entered in maintenance of effort, as they have for the last four years, which is flat funding. So flat funding for twenty-five, flat funding for twenty-six, flat funding for twenty-seven, maybe a little bit of money in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And if that's the case, that's great, flat fund everybody. Flat fund everybody, tell everybody that nobody gets any more money. Our increase for next year is zero percent, zero point zero point zero. Because these are my tax dollars. I live in St. Mary's County. These are our tax dollars. And the decisions that are being made are gonna be really challenging for the school. And the decisions that are being made are going to be really challenging for the school system next year. And before we even start that conversation, I want to make sure that we have an informed populace. So if maintenance of effort it is to be for the next three years, then we should definitely be seeing the exact same thing for everybody else because I'm looking at everybody else and they have slugged in a three percent increase. So that's where we are. That's what I gleaned from yesterday's, um, first budget conversation. Um, there is no money. It's a lights-on budget. Everybody's going to have to tighten their belts. Okay. My question is, why? How did we get here? That's how we got here. So, on top of that, I'm going to hop in for Tammy so Tammy doesn't have to take, you know, credit for this, um, Grinchy time. You'll notice the background is rainy. All right? I don't want to hear again about a rainy day fund. We didn't access any rainy day fund during a pandemic. And now we are post-pandemic where all the money that was pushed in by the government goes away. So there will be ninety three fewer people working on behalf of children in St. Mary's County on July one, twenty twenty four. So let's see that same reduction across all other organizations. Because that's the first thing. There's going to be fewer IRTs, teachers, facilitators, counselors, nurses, PPW, social workers, apprentice, support staff. Now, we are going to do everything in our power to make sure that these people have positions within our system. So all vacancies that are coming forward and any vacancies for next year, we're going to go to this list is, to put those people in those vacancies because we don't want to see people who've dedicated their work on behalf of St. Mary's County Public School kids to not have a job come July one. But we have to cut ninety three FTEs that are grant-funded. We also are trying to put together a budget that will come to you, and there are elements of it that there are really transportation, no matter what. Bus drivers and attendant wages need to increase to be competitive. There is no way around it. Our bus drivers and contractors are the best in the state of Maryland, and I know because they show up every day for work. And they do a great job. But they need to have a competitive wage, and they need to be seeing that, and they need to see that in money. We've been able to provide a retention stipend using ESER funds. That goes away, but we need to continue to do that because that's how we stay competitive, and that's how our drivers have stayed on the job. And then our contractors are asking for PVA operations and maintenance increases. On top of that, we're negotiating. And we're not negotiating just for the sake of negotiating. We have a, we have to negotiate by law. We, our contract, and we have to negotiate the next contract. And our contract and negotiations isn't being driven by us necessarily. It's being driven by the governor's decision to raise the minimum salary to sixteen dollars starting July, January one, twenty twenty five. That's not a decision that we made. Nobody asked us where that money was going to come from, but it will go up to sixteen dollars. And the blueprint, from the very beginning, we've said, it's going to be the heaviest lift to get to sixty thousand dollars in the southern school systems, the eastern shore school systems, and the western school systems because we weren't paying our teachers sixty thousand dollars to start. Now, it's not going to be a big lift in Baltimore County, Baltimore City, Howard County, Anarundo County, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and even in Charles County because they were already starting their salaries up there that high. But for us, it's a big, huge lift, and no one's giving us the money. So the money's going to have to come from local sources. And then SMASA, we have a four-year agreement. It's already in, it's done. It's in place. You signed it. We're obligated. And then the last is health insurance. Health insurance costs more each year. We have been able to do almost ama- the most miraculous, amazing things by having people directly engage with their healthcare to understand the decision, to have them move to the appropriate plan, to have the major, we went from triple option being predominant and HMO being the least to HMO being the predominant and PP, and the triple option being the least. But no matter what, health insurance is going to be anticipated minimally to increase ten percent next year, and that's four million dollars alone. So this is the budget. It is going to go forward. The school system will look different in twenty twenty five unless we have some really productive conversations about how to make sure that we have the money to do what we need to do for our kids. So January will be quite an eye-opening month. And I hope that everybody really pays attention and asks questions if they don't understand or if the numbers don't add up. If I get told one more time that we're not transparent, the thing is, if your eyes are closed, nothing's transparent. So we need to all have our eyes open, ask questions, and we'll make sure that there will not be an unanswered query. When we went to Maryland Legislative Services, they, uh, they said, look, there's, you know, here we are. There's only two things you can do. Cut spending or raise revenues. And I can tell you right now, no matter what, we're going to be cutting expenses. And I hope that we find an opportunity to raise revenues because there isn't enough money to continue to do the great work that we're doing with kids. So. I apologize, Ms. McCord, for hijacking, but it's easier if people are just mad at me.
I have no questions.
Any questions?
She says it nicer though.
She does. And I want to say, we have an incredible working relationship with everybody in county government, with Jeanette Cudmore, with, I mean, it, it is, it is astonishing, like, just the commitment of people to solve problems and work through things. And I know in other systems, they're trying to pass laws about like transparent, all this other stuff. That's, that's not us down here. We are, we really do make sure that if there's a question asked, there's an answer given.
Absolutely. In fact, I engaged in that very conversation with Ms. Cudmore yesterday, and she assured me that they're getting all the information they need from us and that we've been fully transparent on all of our fiscal matters. Um, but speaking of partnerships, the county government did sign yesterday with the Everside contract. So that was a very strategic planned initiative between the school system and the county government to manage our costs.
The only other thing I would add to the conversation is that, um, for all the people who say, well, the blueprint's giving you all kinds of money, and even Brett Kerwin is claiming that the blueprint is giving everybody lots more money, um, it is not. Because we're not one of the big six. Um, we're one of the, um, stalwart eighteen. And, um, and so we don't rate, unfortunately. I should talk to the governor. He thinks we rate. He knows we rate.
The, the other cost driver that we all know is inflation. I mean, it's really high now. I don't, I don't know what the consumer price index is, but everything being equal, just the, the cost, uh, to buy groceries and fuel and everything has gone up. So it's putting added pressure on the school system, of course.
That's correct. Good. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, that's all we have. So January, oh, you have more down there?
Oh, no, no, I just, I, you know, sorry.
I said Merry Christmas. He said ho, ho, ho.
Oh, I got it.
Sorry.
All right. So we have a work session on January third, the day after everyone comes back from the holiday winter break at nine AM. We'll have executive session at eight. And then the next regular board meeting will be on Thursday, January eleventh, at, and that's morning meeting. So once again, executive session at eight and the full board meeting at nine AM. And with that, we are adjourned.